It got quiet.
Can we please rise for the pledge and remain rising afterwards for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can have a moment of silence for all those deployed and the people that are, have been called up and are now on alert and are also our first responders. Thank you. Okay, first, we're going to start with public comment. New Freedom Judge Eric Schaefer.
Good evening, everybody. How are you all doing? Nice to see you without a table between the two of us, or multiples of us. You're with the ladies? How are you?
Good.
Pretty good. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a word or two tonight. I think I've met many of you at the polls and hopefully haven't been too much a pain in the every ear for the times I've interacted, but hopefully, oh. The red button? Okay, terrific. Just staring at it. So basically, just wanted to touch base about a few things that have been on my mind as far as the elections. Wondering primarily what will facilitate the process as far as either setting up the polls or being able to work through after, after the polls are completed. And we've had wonderful cooperation from the borough folks and also from the catering folks in the building who have been primarily responsible for gaining access. But there have been a couple of hiccups every now and again as far as timing. So I'm wondering if there's a way to think about maybe addressing this situation that would let us ameliorate that. Primarily making sure that we might be able to get access to the building to set the polls up the afternoon before we typically try to come in around three in the afternoon or so. It usually takes an hour and a half or two hours or so to set things up and get things ready.
The day before?
The day before. We've had a couple of instances where there's been like scheduling conflict. Brenda has been a person I've spoken with at the office and she's been great as far as being able to sort of rearrange the schedule and make sure things are facilitated to move at. But I just thought, hey, let me be proactive and see if.
What time, I'm sorry. Do you want to come in the day before?
Ideally, we could, we'd like to get in around three o'clock, just sort of later in the, you know, later in the afternoon before the airtime and all of that.
So we could just do the day before election? We just don't have anything scheduled?
If that works out, I mean, I hate to restrict the whole day, but.
No, it won't be the whole day. It'll be after two or after.
Perfect. That would be, that would be ideal. The other issue is the closet. The machines get delivered sort of an unknown amount of time prior to the election day itself. I never know exactly when it is and apparently the election office sort of works on a rolling scale of where the urgencies are and how things roll out. So they said their best guess is probably seven to 10 days prior to the election is when, is when we can expect for the equipment to be delivered. And we've been coexisting very well with, again, the catering folks. The last time we were there, it's obvious that they've had need to expand and utilize the closet will further than had been the case. So I'm just wondering if we could just make a note about having, having access to the equipment and not having it blocked and stuff because we get there six o'clock basically to set up and open the polls and there are some things that we can't do till the morning of.
And the closet you use is the one that's right off of the.
Correct. Yep, correct. And there's a, there's a lock, there's a key locked for that, of course.
So we'll make sure that closet is open and free for 10 days?
Yeah, open would be great, but, but also things not getting pushed behind or at least brought back out if they, if they are delivered too early to interfere with the function. And that's the, that's the primary, primary concern and that we will try to put them back in in a way that would facilitate using the closet for the other purpose as well. And finally, access to the building itself. I've been in a situation of having to contact people and, again, cooperation's been good, but there have been some timing delays and you never know what's going to come up as far as being able to do that. I wondered if there might be a borough contact person and would be possible to consider making a key available for the day before or certainly the day of the election when I walk in, walk in the building. I don't have any interest in keeping it with me all the time, but.
Do you want, do you want us to give you a key for the days of the election?
If that's possible, I think that would be ideal.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And that way I could sort of get the, make sure the building's secure and make sure everything is.
Absolutely, yeah.
Unless anybody has any questions, that's pretty much what I have hoped to discuss.
Okay, well, I appreciate the information and thank you so much for your service. You do a great job for the community.
Well, we've had a lot of cooperation and as I'm sure everybody's aware of things, you know, the interest in the elections has been very high and I'm hoping we're doing a good job to make it flow through for everybody.
Oh, yeah. That's great. Thank you so much.
Does the key that opens the front door that he wants open the closet also, is it the same key so that you can get in the closet to get the?
No, we'll make sure, we'll make sure you have the keys you need for the building.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We're good? Okay. Thank you. I would be highly remiss not to take the opportunity to just go ahead and thank all the dedicated poll workers that have come out and have been excellent as far as handling all the excitement and energy that is there on the poll. And I've got a good group of folks that have been really wonderful. So again, thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Senior Center?
Good evening, everyone. I don't know all of you, but I do know a few of you, so I'd like to thank you for having me here. I'm the new executive director of that South Central Senior Center, which is in the community building up over the hill. I know that many of you know that we're there, but a lot of people do not really understand what a senior center does. So when you say senior center to people, they often think nursing home and that's really not at all what we are. We are, I always describe it as a social club for 60 and over. We have the privilege of serving members of this community 60 years and older. We provide lunches, trips, classes, volunteer opportunities, as well as serving as a hub for resources and information for our seniors. The only qualifications to join is that you must be 60 years old or older and New York County resident. We are a nonprofit, so that means that we must do fundraising to supplement our finances. Like many other nonprofits and businesses, we have been negatively impacted by the pandemic, which made it all but impossible for us to do the kind of fundraising that we are normally expected to do. Which brings me to why I'm here with you tonight. We are very excited to be planning our first in-person fundraiser, a bingo for April 24th. We are hoping to have it in the gym and I am seeking a no-cost rental for our center. We would uphold the rental agreement and be sure that the gym is left in the same order that we find it. This would allow more of the profit from the event to directly benefit our center in turn helping us to better serve this community. We do hold our own small games of chance license, which will be used for this event. We are very excited to be a part of this community and look forward to working as a team with the borough, the council, community members and business owners to build a successful and thriving place for our seniors. I hope that you'll be moved to grant our request. Thank you so much for your consideration.
It's April 24th all day or?
It's, we're going to have the doors open at noon and the bingo's going to start at two. So we would need to be in in the morning to set up tables and.
April 24th is a Saturday?
Sunday.
I entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the fee for the Senior Center event on, I'm sorry, is it April 24th?
Sunday.
Sunday, April 24th for that, for that event.
Motion is second. Is there any other discussion? You have two seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pos? My vote is aye.
Thank you very much.
New Freedom Lions Club?
I'm not Kathy Taylor. Yes, good evening. Yeah, the Lions Club is working with the South Central PA Blood Bank, which services York Hospital and the other hospitals of York County, you know, as opposed to Red Cross, which, which really takes care more of the south of us. And we'd like to do a blood drive on the 14th of June from 10:00 to 6:00. And we would like to, to have the community center available to us from 9:00 to 7:00. And we would like to see if we, if we can have with that, you know, free use of the, of the site for, for the blood drive and that that not be charged against the Lions Club necessarily as a, you know, as a community event and so forth.
If you did it on the April 24th, you'd have all the bingo people there.
Yeah, that would be, that might work. Yeah, we should, we should get our schedules to go.
Free ticket with every pint?
There you go. Okay, that, I, I mean, you guys do an awful lot for the community and I would definitely entertain a motion for that. It's a community service.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept and for the, for having no charge for that and nothing against it.
Right, okay, and that would be for the 14th of June from 10:00 to 6:00 with some time allowed for setup. I have a motion?
Yes, motion.
I have a second from bingo. Is there any other discussion?
Other discussion?
I'm sorry?
It says on here, once per year waiver. I recall, didn't we give, we have three uses a year? Didn't that come up when the lionesses?
That was an error on their part. They realize that they have.
So they just have the one?
But we wouldn't be charging this against their free uses.
Well, I'm not saying I want to, but I just want to clarify, if they have three a year from what I remember past, or is it just the one per year for Lions?
That's a good question.
We approved three.
I remember, I remember.
That's because we took one from the Lady Lions.
Lady Lions disbanded.
I just wanted to get that corrected for future, that it's three.
Right, three total.
We'll need to check at least to make sure it says that because I do not believe it says that, but at this point we can.
Yeah, we approved it. Council approved it at a previous meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just check it. It's not a problem. So I have a motion to waive the fee for the 14th of June from 10:00 to 6:00 for the blood drive. All in favor? Pos? My vote is aye.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Do we have any other public comment on agenda items? Okay, I'm going to reserve the right to come back to public comment. We have some people that I gave the wrong time to for the, for, that want to talk about pickleball, so when they get here, we'll, we'll talk, we'll come back and talk about that.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
And it's, Andrew, can we take those blue flags down now that mowing season is getting ready to start in our yard, those blue utility flags and that?
Yes, they are, they are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They are done collecting data, so yes, you can remove them.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for last council. Any comments or corrections?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from February's meeting for the council.
I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos? My vote is aye. Okay, we missed pickleball by 30 seconds. So you, do you have a spokesperson designated or?
Suzie?
Yes.
Couldn't you please?
You could come up. Yeah, there's a microphone and everything.
Hi, my name is Suzie Blake. I am a resident of New Freedom for at least 15 years and I'm here tonight to ask for the council to consider building pickleball courts. It is the fastest growing sport and it is good for elderly people, so.
I know Suzie for years and years when she came to the USA.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just remember we had talked about doing a pad someplace in one of the other.
We, we did. We got, we actually got estimates. It's on the agenda for tonight because I knew they were coming. I just wanted somebody to represent pickleball, so. And does anyone else, I know there's three or four of you, do you have any?
I know that, I, I sent you a little note.
Yeah, you sent it.
Saying that pickleball now is five days a week at the Y. And there's usually at least 12, I'd say to 15, and there's two nights there, there. And most of these people, when spring comes, are going to want to go outside. So, you know, we were hoping in the interim until you could actually build pickleball courts that maybe we could have the lines on the tennis courts like we did before. Because, you know, and it's a family sport. I mean, expenses, there are grandchildren, there are children, and they play, I mean, anybody can play pickleball. And it is great exercise.
Okay, thank you.
How many courts were you looking to have outside? How many courts were you looking to have outside?
As many as possible. We have a lot of pickleball players. We used to play here in New Freedom in the community center, but then that was stopped for some reason. I don't know. I think it picked up again. I kind of right now play at the YMCA, but there's so many people that are coming every, every week more to practice and learn how to play the game.
So you do have, you do have classes?
Pardon?
You, you do have classes for beginners?
Yeah, I do have.
So you don't have people like myself, I could slow.
They have classes on Monday and Wednesday.
Monday and Wednesday is the beginner's.
I'm more advanced already, so I don't know whether beginner or Y. I'm sorry.
So I was at the rec council meeting and they did have a discussion on pickleball and I heard you say that you are at the YMCA. So are you separate from the people that come to the community center? Are you like two separate groups that you're looking for the same thing?
Yeah, we all like to play together, even though we play in different spots during the week, we, we are all like one big team.
So you are a team, but right now you're going separate directions to play?
Because of the room.
Because of the room?
Right.
How many courts do you have over at the Y?
At the Y, we have three courts.
We have four up at the community center.
You do? Okay.
And there's generally about 15, 16 people. It's three days and two nights.
We have about the same amount of people in, at the Y. We play Tuesday mornings, Thursday and Friday mornings.
And Monday and Wednesday?
And we have like anytime 16, 17, 18 people. And we have to like, they have to sit in, you know, in line to get a court, to be able to play. And everybody is just so hyped up about pickleball because it is just such a good sport, you know, it just, it catches you right away because it's not, it's not stranguously, but you get a lot of movements and a lot of good exercise.
We're kind of faced, years ago, like 20, back when I was younger, but I've been scheduling fields now for a lifetime pretty much. And as you're aware with soccer, you know, when soccer first came to town, we had no soccer fields. So what we did was we took the outfield's of the baseball fields and lined them so we could play soccer. And then gradually we got Miller Park and Cudoros and some other soccer fields in the area. We're kind of in that same analogous situation where, you know, we have the tennis courts, we have the, the possibility of putting a pad down, but at some point, I mean, the tennis courts aren't used at 100%. So I think, you know, what, what Judy said about temporarily, putting temporary lines down on the tennis court to allow people to play during the off time when there's not anyone from tennis makes a lot of sense. It's, it's, it's the same as what we did with baseball and soccer.
Andy, what would be, excuse me, what would be an off time so we, so we don't have a conflict with tennis players and people want to take a tennis lesson? So what would be a off, off time on the tennis court?
I don't know. I mean, we're, you know, I think what we probably have to do, I mean, anytime you have scarce resources like we had with the base, I mean, baseball was using the fields almost at 100%. So what we did was we divided the week up and we decided, okay, Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays are baseball, Tuesdays and Thursdays are soccer, Saturdays can be half and half and Sundays are rain makeups. That's kind of what we did.
And another question, do you play in any other municipalities? Do you have tennis courts or anything?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you play in any other municipalities? Do you use courts?
Any other municipalities?
Yes.
No. Yes, yes, we do. Stewartstown has some, they have pickleball lines on their tennis courts. And we've never had a problem because really if you ride past the tennis courts, other, there aren't a lot of tennis players playing on them.
Where, in Stewartstown or here?
Even here, I mean, I've ridden past here in the evening and, I mean, few, very few nights do I ever see anybody out there playing tennis.
During nice, during nice weather, there's a family that plays there every night.
Okay.
I think, but I think that's, that's what we're talking about. I mean, I think you would have to say, first of all, you'd have to consider Mary Ann's tennis program.
Yeah.
So that, you know, that has to be covered. And then after that, the free time that's available from that, I mean, I hate to throw it on the office, I don't really hate it for me to do it, but someone would have to set up a schedule so that, that you would know that on Tuesday mornings you can go play pickleball and on Thursday morning, whatever. We need to, you know, I just, we just need to share the resources. I mean, everybody's a taxpayer. I think that, you know, they deserve, and if we can at some point then put in a, put in a pickleball pad, that would be great too. Just like we're expanding fields right now, so.
It's a shame this, the pickleball didn't take off a couple of years ago. The tennis courts, we could have put two or three more tennis courts in and done that.
It'd be nice to have an outside one too, when the weather is nice, yeah. Get some fresh air.
I'm sorry. I think tennis is like, it's of course still a sport that everybody knows and it's still popular, but pickleball is overpowering it by far. Pickleball has grown 600% in the United States in sports. And simply because I believe we're all a little bit more mature people and would like to have a game that is a little less stressful and a little less fast than tennis. And everywhere you go basically, I mean, I don't know if I can talk that much or not, but I just came back from Florida and every area, every little borough, every little township had like six pickleball courts and people were standing in line to play because it's so popular. I think it's, it's definitely a thing of the future, whether it's going to be approved here tonight or not, but eventually it will be, I'm pretty sure.
I think we probably, Brian, do you, you and I and Ingo, we could probably get together and come up with some.
I think we should.
Some cost estimates and.
Well, we should look into that. Let me ask you, do you, do you have tournaments?
Yeah. Yeah, they do.
Because that would be an attention to too, because, you know, in the summertime, people get together and they would have tournaments.
They have quite a few tournaments in New York.
Oh, okay.
And all over they have them. And I know we share the pickleball courts in Stewartstown with the tennis players with all, no problem. If the tennis players were there, they got a court and we had a court. Got two courts.
Yeah, we share them.
You know, I mean, you can, you, you know, that isn't, we've never had, and even when you had your lines drawn on the tennis courts here, I mean, we knew when Marion had her classes, we didn't go near them. And when Marion wasn't having her classes, we shared. You know, it's very easy to share. They can have their court, we can have a court. So it's not, it's not, you know, hard to share.
Oh, if you, if you go to Simonium, right by the rail, the light rail?
Yeah.
You know, going into Baltimore, there's one court after another. That's what got my interest.
Yeah, yeah. But even down there, there, there are courts that are, you're standing in line waiting.
Yeah, they, they're using it at night.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think just the New Freedom and Shrewsbury are growing so fast. The population is exploding, so we all need to have at least some kind of.
Yeah, Andrew and I had spoken earlier, well, actually I guess it was last week, about the possibility of either grant money, possibility of a budget item for next year to essentially plan for it or some other options. He's been looking into it. It's obviously not going to happen, you know, overnight or anything like that. But it is, it is certainly a growing sport. I don't think it's going to go anywhere. I don't think it's a fad, so to speak, so I think it is a good asset to the community to have.
Well, we'd like for you just to consider it and put it in your bag at the burner and, you know, mow it over. And maybe the next thing or better thing to do or first thing to do is do the lines at the tennis court. And the tennis courts are sitting there empty. I hardly ever see anybody playing there and I guarantee you, they would be crowded with pickleball players.
So. Yeah, we'll definitely, I think. Yeah, we'll definitely, I think, the three of us.
We can work on that, yeah.
Are you aware you already have a pickleball committee?
No.
July of 2020, you initiated a pickleball committee. Ryan is the head with Inga and Burnell.
Yeah, that's one of the things I was going to speak about tonight. We had the plans, remember Burnell? We had the cost factor.
So you already have a committee for this?
Kim went with us. Remember, we went out and we looked at the property. We had a beautiful place.
What's the park off of Washington?
Bunker Hill.
Yeah, we looked at Bunker Hill and we considered putting in like four courts up there.
Yeah, there was a place.
In fact, I got an estimate to put in the pickleball pads. I think it was like 12K. And then we kind of tabled it after that.
Well, we didn't understand it.
The original one was that the Borough would pay half and pickleball had to, the group at that time had to come up together.
I mean, it's probably closer to 15K now with gas prices and asphalt, but it's still not that much money to put in.
It wasn't. I was surprised.
In general, do you have your own nets?
I think I might have those nets.
Well, the YMCA provides them. And I think the Lufthansa does too.
For when they're at the community center, yeah.
They have them. They provide them as well, yeah. But, you know, I mean, I don't think it's so complicated or hard to get a net. I think if that would be the holdup, you know, I'm sure we could all get together and get a couple of nets.
No, but there's an additional expense of actually building and putting in the asphalt for all those courts.
That's the 15K.
Yeah.
That's for...
Well, I understand it's not a process.
That was for...
Four?
The four, yeah.
One thing, maybe you could get together and have some type of drive to get to raise, to try to raise some money. Maybe that, you know, because I'll tell you what, there are a lot of people. I always laugh whenever I heard of pickleball because I'm a tennis player. But if it's all the people, that might be able to do that. That would help.
Would you be adverse to doing something like we do now and you do over at the Y? Instituting a policy where you pay per month?
We aren't paying per month right now. I mean, the Y is a little bushy.
No, but if we put pickleball courts in at Marge Goodfellow Park, would you still be willing to pay on monthly basis?
Would we then charge all the people that play tennis? Would you put a coin machine there?
Could. You'd have to play for an hour.
But that's next to impossible to regulate.
I was being facetious.
It seems like somebody needs to come up with some funding.
Sorry?
Did they come up with funding for the tennis courts? How did they come up with the funding for the tennis courts?
So it came from DCED.
Oh, I was just wondering, yeah.
It was grant money that, you know...
Because I think there is grant money for pickleball too.
Yeah, there are. Actually, I saw something online about grant money for pickleball. So why don't we, again, why don't we reinstitute our pickleball committee and have them report back next month with the intent of going ahead with something. We need a motion for that, just for them to get together and then, I think, let them come back next month, report, and then we'll have a motion to take some action. Is that good?
Yep, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we haven't done it yet.
I was going to say, you can even do it in...
This fall, there's a rec person that could be coming on that could assist in this also in getting this organized and running.
Oh, you mean the rec director? Yes, oh, absolutely, yeah. That was the intent. Yeah, that's why we've been trying to pursue a rec director.
But it's not?
The study's not done yet.
We're sure that she's coming or...
Well, we don't even have it. We have to have the government brief the Y before we can...
No, it's not for sure yet.
I just have a question. Are you looking into putting the lines on the tennis courts or that's enough?
I think that makes sense. I mean, I would hope that the committee will come back with the cost, put the lines on. And obviously you guys want to get outside as soon as the weather breaks, so, I mean, and that's not, I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's great.
Council already said no to that previous.
Putting the lines on?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we're...
It was way back.
So they're strongly opposed?
It was opposed because we thought, remember, we thought the tennis courts were going to be damaged.
Let's see if we can get some kind of a timeline on pickleball, dedicated pickleball courts and if it's going to be a long time down the road and look at the possibility of temporary, something that's not going to damage the surface, about temporary lines on the court that they can then be removed and they can be returned to dedicated tennis.
If we find a spot and we approve it next month to go ahead and put it on, we should be able, I mean, I don't know how backed up the contractors are and I know there are supply chain delays at this point, but, I mean, it's really, literally, it's a two-week project. I mean, they come in, they grade it, they put the asphalt down and we're done. So it's not like it's a...
We're talking Marge Goodfellow Park, right?
That would be my preference, although it could be somewhere else.
That's my strong efforts. We're trying to grow a community here and an area. And I think that that is a prime area. You have people on bicycles, walking, and then they'll say, hey, what's going on over there? And bringing more people in. I just, I just think that needs to be the hub of where we're putting things.
I'm figuring that.
It's a beautiful place.
So maybe we could...
What damage could paint lines cause to the court?
The sun fades the paint that's on there now and it would leave paint marks or lines down. I don't think of it as being a big deal. I think, you know, I made a joke the other day because I, you know, I do joke some time down. But, you know, we're actually doing our children a disservice because every tennis court in the country is going to have pickleball lines on it and we're not teaching our kids to play tennis on courts with pickleball lines. So I really honestly think that this is the wave of the future. I mean, it grew 39% just last year. So I honestly think that we deserve to give that to our citizens. Not everybody plays tennis. I can't play tennis anymore. My hip won't take it. So, you know, this gives other people more, more things to do in the community. And like you said, if it's at Marge Goodfellow Park, that's a real, that's a real big, you know, it's going to pull a lot of people in. It'll actually increase business in the community. I think it's a good thing.
So did I hear you were going to leave this on the agenda?
Yes.
So we talk about this every month because it seems to be coming up.
Well, it's not going to, it won't fall off the agenda until we make a final decision. I'm hopeful that our decision will be to go ahead and build some pickleball courts at Marge Goodfellow Park.
So is the committee that I referenced going to be looking actively over the next month?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I have some information. I don't need to be on the committee, but I have the stuff that I got from Ross Excavating and the paving information, so, you know, we can certainly contact him again.
The only thing you should consider is that while there seems to be an immediate need, you just missed the DCNR grant cycle. So by delaying it next year, you could include it into, if you want to call it the next phase of the park, and then we're going to talk about that later, but that might be something to consider is adding that into the next phase and then making that application to DCNR for grant funding, so.
Well, and that could be, you know, we could push the pickleball courts to next year and line one of the courts this year for two pickleball courts to be used when people aren't using it for tennis. That would be a good compromise, I would think. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to approval of the treasures report for February of 2022. One thing I asked Andy to do is look at the impact of gas prices on our budget. And he pointed out that it's not going to just be gas prices, but it's also going to be asphalt because it's an oil-based product, so it could affect our paving too.
I have a few questions, Andrew. The cable franchise, is that, that was a large amount, is that one year for the...
That's a quarter.
A quarter?
And that comes in from Conca.
That's per quarter.
He's getting the rec grant. Was that for something specific?
Yeah, that is for the recreation study. That's to hire the consultant to do the peer-to-peer study. There should be two allocations there. We're allowed to take up 90% of that grant without, before it's been used.
People's security, the remaining balance draw.
That was for the 2021 general obligation note. And that draw, basically, it's a draw note. So as we spend the funds, we're able to transfer that so we're not paying interest on the money at a time. That would have been to pay the down, the application for payment number three to JOR for the Franklin and May, whatever it was.
Were you going to talk about the grant money?
Yeah, like in the second...
Yes.
And the engineering outsource for Stewartstown?
That's for ECO services, for the, going out and doing their, it's not really engineering. It's more building inspection and code enforcement.
Is that a standard amount monthly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly?
I believe that's both quarterly, yes.
So every quarter?
That probably, I mean, that probably varies, right? Depending on how much work they have.
It does, yeah. Depending on how many permits he's processing, yeah.
Is there a standard amount of hours that he is dedicated there?
No, it's just as needed.
He doesn't go over Tuesday and Thursday mornings anymore?
He does, but, I mean, he could go, he could go Tuesday for two hours, he could go Tuesday for six hours. It's really based on the man.
Under the rec fund revenues, Berquentin, $20,000, what was that for because of the new buildings?
Correct. That was the recreation fees. That would have just been one building. Fee is $2,000 per unit, so with the ten apartments above each building, they not pay those fees.
So we can expect that again for the second bill?
Well, that was already, I believe they paid for the building, so that would have been back in January since they paid the other building. So in theory, yes, there's been, you actually see that, the cash flow statement? If you go to...
Which page are you on, Tim?
They're not numbered.
But at the top, what does it say?
It says rec fund monthly revenues.
You're on the rec page, okay.
Where the tennis clinic is, pickleball income. I just saw $20,000 for Berquentin.
Yeah, if you go to the second page, which is the cash flow report, and you have the account listing down the left-hand side. The third up from the first black line is the rec fund capital. You'll see the full four in the other page you have there. And forty of that was...
So on the sewer fund for permits for Berquentin, are they done or is this...
This was for the two buildings, yeah. So all the other fees for the townhouses and apartments, all that was credited before. So they ran out of that credit for things that were prepaid. Now, for these two buildings, they need to pay water, sewer, tapping fees, as well as rec fees for all the dwellers.
So they're done, they're paid up?
They are paid up, yes.
Now, you and I had a discussion the other week. Apparently, some of us were under the impression that there was going to be a whole building put in down at the Marge Goodfellow Park. And that was a part of, yeah, that was a part of their rec fee, but you said you can't find that anywhere?
There is, there's no agreement. However, I did pull the final subdivision land development plan. And there's a note on that plan that says the developer has agreed for, in lieu of rec fees, that they would build a 400-square-foot pavilion as well as a 112-foot storage shed. So while there's no formal agreement, it is on a recorded plan that they still need to contribute to some kind of recreation facility. Yes, building facility at, within the park.
Yeah, because originally it was almost down by the stream.
Yeah.
And then previously, the conversation went that it would go up where the, close to the other pavilion is now so that it would be closer to the stage.
And I think that needs to be kind of a fluid conversation with the, with Berquentin. You know, if we're looking at possibly the phase two again and looking at building options, whether that's an actual, still a contribution or if that is another 20-by-20 pavilion, a 400-square-foot pavilion like is mentioned in the subdivision land development.
We were talking today that we might use that as a basis of their contribution, but we might add some money to it to get something larger.
And that's why they don't pickleball courts.
We could build pickleball courts.
Yeah.
Well, even though it's on the plan, they still, they honor, they're going to honor it, right? Fact is on the plan.
I'm sure they will, yeah.
Special agreement or anything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any kind of statute of limitations, so to speak, on anything like that?
It's a five-year, I mean, they're subject to it for five years as they build it, but if it's on there, it's part of their condition of approval. Do you have a condition, do you guys give them a condition letter when you approve?
I looked through the file and did not see one.
Because oftentimes, these guys will give developers an approval letter that says, your plan is here by approved, subject to following conditions. Typically, it's laid out in there. So if it's on the, if it's on the plan, I think you should probably talk to them and get that, try to get that verified in writing, if that's a concern.
Well, it isn't right on the plan, so, you know, I agree.
You'd be surprised how many people forget that. Maybe it's on plans.
I see the community center fund revenue. It says faceable occasions, rental, $46.80. Is that for...
That would have been for... No, that would have been for the lease agreement. And I believe that would be half the year.
I was going to say, how often is that? So that's six months worth?
That should be half the year.
Sometimes they just pay a year to just to...
Yeah, last year, the year before, I think they gave us a check for the whole year.
And when is their contract up?
They, most of those renew annually, so they actually will be up at the end of this year. So I have already in my calendar that August, September, we need to start looking at those lease agreements and making sure they're up to date. They automatically renew year to year, but I think it's time to evaluate those rates.
So August and September?
Budget season.
Budget season, yeah. Okay. Full of questions. The vehicles fuel, that's filed here for all, how secure is that?
So in July or, July or August of last year, we had the fuel cloud system installed. So basically, the only way you can get fuel over there is if you have a PIN. That PIN is assigned by the Borough Office. And that PIN, your driver only relates to certain vehicles. So they can't, you know, the fire company can't dispense select a vehicle that's owned by Borough. Borough can't select fire company vehicles, so there's really no...
How many drivers are there that pass cars?
The, I've been communicating a lot with the fire company, EMS back and forth as people leave. So as soon as someone leaves, we disable their PIN. You know, I would think with office staff, there might, there might be, between office and public works... works, I'll just say, um, you know, a dozen, and I think there might be twenty to thirty on the fire EMS side.
Yeah, we just updated that, I think, didn't we?
Yeah, Marcia's been, she's been sending me updates, can you add this person, remove them, and, and we've kind of set that up now that, um, you know, monthly, quarterly, we're just kind of making sure that that list is current.
And it allows us to track fire EMS and?
So, so fire, EMS, use that pump along with Borough?
Correct.
For it?
Yes, and that's all separated, so that, now when we get the bill, when they come to fill those tanks,
Okay.
We correctly allocate those to fire EMS and Borough, and then break it down regular in diesel as well.
Okay. So, this thirteen fifty-six, that's for how, how long?
Well, it depends on, it depends on demand, so, you know, Arrow kind of monitors, you know, tanks, they, they can fill every two weeks, they can fill every week, depending on what the demand of that tank is.
I don't need to, um, voice the cost of gasoline.
Yeah.
Um, and I hear they're not even siphoning tanks, they're now drilling holes.
Oh, geez.
Drilling holes in the tank and they're taking the gas that way in neighborhoods. Um, so I just wondered how secure our facility is to, you know?
That make mess more?
It actually has a camera in it, too, so.
So there's a camera there?
Yeah, the camera is built into the tablet, it's actually a tablet running the system in the background, and that's all locked up, and there is a camera in there, so it actually is recorded for the first.
There's actually a recorder, okay, so that's, that's good.
Plus the PIN, plus we're able to monitor that, um, and if something is out of whack, it alerts me right away, that, you know, the usage might be high, driver might have filled two vehicles within a couple minutes, something.
Okay, so it, they can track on to those situations?
Absolutely, that's real-time cloud service.
Very secure. If Marcia has another vehicle that she wants to add, can, does she have to contact you, or can she just use a PIN for another vehicle?
Yes, she could use a.
She asked that question the other day?
Yeah, I did add, um, the most.
The chase?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
But, in theory, yes, you could, um, you know, if you're filming, if you're using diesel and you're filling the engine.
Yeah, she just asked 'cause she didn't want to get in trouble with, with Chase truck that they're testing out.
I mean, the, the most important thing there is that we're correctly allocating the fire EMS and, and Borough, and in that case, it would be, um, you know, the vehicle's really up to them on their end, and I provide them the reports to see what, where they're spending the most.
Does that the regional use that?
No.
As well?
That was, there was some history there, that they use rudders, I, I think it's more because, too, now they're out in the other municipalities, and they, instead of coming the whole way back here to need fuel, there's, you know.
There's the rudders in Stewartstown, we talked about this, Stewartstown, there's another, two of them in Shrewsbury, so they can use any of the rudders, if they are running to York for a court hearing or something like that, they can stop at any rudders and, and use that.
Do, do you know off the top of your head what the cost of, uh, gas is that, that we get per gallon here?
I'd have to pull the last invoice out.
We don't pay tax, though, correct? We don't pay the Pennsylvania tax.
Yeah.
Do you know how, how many Borough vehicles, like, I know Borough vehicles, how many employees take home Borough vehicles?
Any?
Take home?
Yeah, to use a Borough vehicle that they fill at that pump to use to come to work, use at work, and then go back home, wake up, come back the next day?
Two.
There are two?
Yeah. Because of being on call, too.
Can I ask who that is on call?
Uh, that would be John and Wade.
John and Wade, okay. They're on call, over twenty-four hour call?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean.
John definitely is there.
Yeah.
If it rains, he's down there. Walton and Company, the community center expenses, I see there are two of those, was that for HVAC?
Uh, one was for HVAC, the other was for the, uh, water heaters, um, there was an issue with hot water in the building, and it came down to the two on-demand units that are downstairs, uh, needed to be serviced and had some issues, so that's all taken care of, everybody's helping.
The air conditioning and everything is?
At this point, I think we're okay.
It, it's holding together, we had some duct tape and some chewing gum there, it's all right.
At this point, but, that's day by day.
Last one, the water fund, there were five repairs that totaled almost sixteen thousand dollars, is that generally monthly, are we doing those type of repairs?
No, no.
That's well, well pumped, and, uh.
There is one, and I wanted to make note of that, um, that we were reviewing things today, and in the water fund, um, if you go about halfway down where it says L B, uh, service,
Yeah.
Uh, for eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-two, that actually is a general fund expenditure, that was for stormwater pipe, so that might, that, that might drop the hurt.
So that'll get transferred?
Does that help, or?
No, these were just repairs, these were just strictly repairs, sixteen thousand dollars.
It was, there were some issues, um, the one well where pumping would be pulled, and there were some.
Placing was split?
Yeah, so that needed to be pulled and repaired, and unfortunately, when you're dealing with those kind of specialty things, it gets a little expensive.
And then likewise, in the sewer fund, there were nineteen repairs totaling fourteen thousand.
Uh, now, those were actually part of some capital expenditures for the, um, recirculation pumps, um, that were, but they were budgeted items, they still come out of repair and maintenance, um, but they're, they were budgeted items.
So generally, we're not having breakdowns every month, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a month being spent in?
No, no, this was a unique circumstance, and, and, um, within, I will say for sewer fund, within a budgeted line item, specifically to be accomplished, um, things that happen out of the ordinary, um, it's, you know, we budget for as much as we can, but it's not normal.
And they do happen, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Some pump, lower, something else.
Fix it.
So that same page you were on, Andrew, for the meters and pipes, and maybe this is a clerical error, Comcast office supply water, we don't get water from Comcast, do we?
Oh, that was for the? Oh, it just says, it just says office supply, and that, the reason the water's behind it, it's water fund, because we have, when in QuickBooks, if we just call it office supply, we can't reuse that wording as a separate account, so the four, four, eight relates to water, and two fifty is office supply, so if we were to say, for a general fund, um, like a four oh nine, two fifty, and say office supply, we can't, can't have two accounts that have the same name, so that's why we put the water behind it, that just signifies the water fund, not that we bought water from Comcast.
Okay, that was a little confusing.
That, that.
Yeah, he did.
Any other questions? Would entertain a motion?
Slam move outside.
Have a motion, the second, accept the treasurer's report for February twenty twenty-two, all in favor?
Aye.
Puzzled, my vote is aye. Um, speaking of the treasurer's report, I just wanted to mention, it's too bad Marcia left, 'cause I was gonna mention Joe Valley. Um, Joe, back three years ago, was talking about how, um, we had problems with traceability in the treasurer's report, and I think Andy and the office staff has now taken the treasurer's report, put it into QuickBooks, it's very transparent, you know, you can ask questions, you can actually see where the money went, and there's a gazin' for every gazout, and, and you can, well, there is, I mean, you can, you can actually trace it, but before, we actually had an accounting system where the revenue coming in was not really attached to the expenses going out, they were in two separate systems, so this is just, just way above and beyond anything that we would've hoped for, so I commend the office staff for, for that.
Marcia will be back.
I'm sorry?
Marcia will be back in a little bit.
Oh, it's okay, I just called her to tell you. Um, I did want to announce that the park equipment is, uh, up and running, the second, um, the adult playground, the, um, thirteen and above playground for the kids, and Donnie said that there are kids out there playing on it, and they really love it, so, so that was, uh, that was a good thing. Um, we had a discussion with Penn Waste, we had asked for, um, I believe, six, six dollars per household for the, um, trash that was missed, and they came back with two dollars and some odd cents, um, the actual fine in the contract is more than that, we thought we were being very lenient, um, as Ryan and I discussed, to, to, to go back and, and, and offer them a lower number because of COVID and the pandemic and staffing issues, um, so we, we're going, I was hoping to announce tonight that we had it resolved, but, um, it's gonna take another, another go around. Are you gonna talk about the EMS meeting, or did you want me to talk about that, Kim? If you want to, you weren't there, were you? I was there on the, well, no, I actually, I actually missed this one, but this is Ann's report. Okay, and maybe I'll add? You can, oh, sure, sure, uh, we've been having EMS meetings, we're trying to get a study done, this, the consultant, the D C E D consultant actually quit, so, um, we don't have a consultant at this point, we are being joined by Springfield Township, Codorus Township, and Tri-Community, uh, all to be included in the, uh, study, and possibly Jacobus, although Jacobus hasn't made a commitment yet. Uh, Bernal and I were trying to, uh, speak with Christian Phillips Hill about Act eighty-four, and Act eighty-four, you're gonna be hearing things about that, and please support it, if you get a chance to support it, support the people who are trying to get it passed, because this act takes and allows the EMS company to be reimbursed directly from the insurance company. What's been happening in the past is the insurance company sends me a check for my ambulance, and then I take it and I cash it, and I go to Vegas, so that's not a good thing, and EMS never sees the money, they've got to go file with the magistrate in order to try to get the money, so this is something that Bernal has spoken with, um, Christian Phillips Hill about, and there's going to be a meeting in April, uh, to discuss it, so, um, hopefully that, that'll get, uh, get passed. Um, we've also, there's been a lot, a lot of discussion about, um, using the magistrate, um, Tri-Community has been using the magistrate, and they said that out of fifty thousand dollars in billables turned over to the district magistrate, only about five thousand was not recouped, we are not currently doing that, and I think it's very important that we encourage R E M S to go after this and to use the district magistrate as a, uh, as a tool to try to get the balance of the money in, 'cause remember, whatever they don't get in from the billing has to come from us in tax dollars. We talked about supply chain issues, um, I, I, I have a question on this myself, and I am, I'm, I'm going to tell you about it, but there were a hundred and forty-one calls and only seventy billable, and maybe, maybe you were party to that discussion, I don't understand how you, I mean, I, I do understand that there are some calls that are not billable if they refuse treatment or whatnot, but, um, Sometimes they're, there's no patient. Yeah, that's half, half the calls they went on, it just seems like a huge number. I agree. That's all I had on the EMS side. Now, they're, they do have a chase truck in service, um, they bought, they got a truck from Glenrock that Glenrock wasn't using, it is staffed, it is fully equipped with everything that you would need, um, and it is currently stationed in New Freedom, they're basically trying it out for three months, so far it has been a great success, uh, where we've had calls, maybe to Stewartstown or someplace else, we have a paramedic that can respond and at least keep somebody going, do assessments, uh, until another ambulance gets there, maybe it's Jacobus, we've had situations where we had to wait twenty, twenty-five minutes for Jacobus, or even, uh, was it Springfield, uh, Spring Garden?
Oh, Spring Garden.
To actually respond because our folks were out, so they're evaluating that, it's working very well, uh, according to Todd, I think there has been a rep from D C E D now, assigned, um, a new person, I can't remember, I think it's a female, her name?
I'm not sure I understand.
No, I'm not talking to you.
It's not Ken Helen, though?
No, it's, um, Siri. I thought I had it turned off. But, um, everything seems to be going well, we had a lot of representation there, Codorus, Jacobus, Rose, Springfield, Glenrock, New Freedom, Shrewsbury, Tri-Community, uh, Glenrock, Railroad, Shrewsbury Township, um, all working together, we're getting some great ideas from some of these other, as you said, from Tri-Community there, uh, gives us an opportunity to try some things that we know worked for them, but, um, that's pretty much all, all I have with, with them. All right, the only other thing I wanted to talk about, um, we had a bunch of emails flying back and forth this weekend, and it led to a number of questions, and, uh, the first thing I want to say is that I think the mayor and council have a great relationship, I think, you know, Kim brings us things to resolve, and I think, I think we do a good job of, of getting them done, but a lot of times you see on TV a city mayor versus a Borough mayor, and a city mayor has public works and facilities reporting to them, and a Borough mayor does not, the Borough mayor is, is more of an interface with the citizens, so the, the P S A B says Borough council members are responsible directly or indirectly for the operation of all functions of the Borough's government, and Borough government is kind of strange, uh, really, all of the actual power, responsibility, whatever, however you want to say it, is, is based in, in council, um, there is no highest elected official, at least in my mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but, uh,
Head elected official.
I'm sorry?
Head elected official, not highest.
Well, there's not even a, a head elected official, so to speak, I mean, all of us sitting on council were elected by the body of the people, and we're all pretty much at the same level, I don't report to you, you don't report to me, we're just the same, that's the way I look at it, and we're working for, to help these people get through major issues, water, sewage, all the problems that go through, so I look at it like we're all, like we're all equals, um, I guess the only other thing I wanted to say is, Donnie reports to, to Andy, uh, John reports to Andy, and Andy reports to council, and as the elected president, they, they report to me, and I'm the one that kind of makes the day-to-day decisions in between the time, our monthly meetings, so that's how this all works, and a lot of questions came out of the emails, like, you know, who, you know, who, who does what? And that's who does what, so, and Mr. Mayor will continue to bring us things, and we'll continue to talk to the mayor, and I think that's a great thing. And I think that's a great thing. But, you know, the buck stops here. And that's this whole table, not just one person up here. Did I say anything wrong? Nope.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Well, let me end this. The way the Borough Code is written, you guys have very specific defined powers. And the mayor's powers are specifically defined. And the borough council's powers are specifically defined. And unfortunately, the mayor's powers are very few and far between in the Borough Code. So it's, I mean, the Borough Code, the latest draft has really stripped out a lot of powers of, you know, the mayor may have had. And usually, the way the powers of the mayor are exercised is through the direction of the police department. And that's typically the way mayors had their hand to administer the government within boroughs. Obviously, you delegate your authority to have a police department to the regional committee. So we don't even have a police department, technically. So for what it is, I mean, that's what the Borough Code says. And that's how a lot of the materials read with regard to the relationship between the mayor and the borough and the borough council. The borough council is really charged with the legislative and administrative powers of a community, of a borough.
Anyone have any questions? Sorry, I was a little bit of a class, I guess.
Well, in Chapter 10A of the Borough Code under Emergencies Number Four, it says, "If the mayor considers a state of emergency exists, the mayor may issue a proclamation which shall be in writing and posted in one or more conspicuous places and the contents of which shall be made available to all news media declaring a state of emergency for a period of not to exceed seven days unless sooner rescinded, modified, or ratified or extended by resolution of council."
That's correct.
That is, that is a true statement. And by ordinance, our snow emergencies, and I wasn't going to get into the snow emergencies, but that's actually what.
Well, let's get into it because that's why.
That's what led to this, right.
Came up, I wanted to declare a snow emergency.
Okay. By ordinance, our snow emergencies are declared by either the borough office or Stan Walters. That's what our ordinance says. If we want to change that, we could rewrite an ordinance. But that doesn't apply to New Freedom Borough.
But that's why I got the notification from Stan to do that.
Because he didn't say to do that. He said you can do that. He said you can, and can does not. Let me just say this. If you declare a snow emergency, it impacts the citizens. It impacts 14 streets in New Freedom Borough and hundreds of houses. In order to avoid a needless impact, the snow emergencies are called by the borough office. That guy there has 30-some years removing snow. Andrew has however many years. Jake has however many years. Altogether, it's 40, 50 years of removing snow. They look at the weather coming in. They look at today, which was 56 degrees and everything melted away. They look at what has to be done in order to ensure that we have a safe community, that emergency services can get through. And there never has been, to my knowledge, Danny, you can correct me, but there's never been, to my knowledge, a snow emergency called by the mayor.
I did last year.
Absolutely.
We have a record of it. I declared a state of emergency.
I think in conjunction, yes, in conjunction with the borough office, you never had a situation where the borough manager said, yeah, no, we don't really need a snow emergency. I don't want to impact 14 streets and hundreds of citizens in order to call a snow emergency that really wasn't a snow emergency. So all that I'm asking.
All it does is clear the street so that the.
Yeah, you're right, it clears the street. Hundreds of people have to go park at the municipal parking lot.
That's the idea, so they can clean this, clear the street.
And if we've got a public works manager telling us that we don't need to have that done, I'm asking you to honor that. And I'm asking us to follow the Borough Code.
As far as I'm concerned, it isn't the Borough Code that I can declare an emergency, a state of emergency.
It's not, under New Freedom Code, which.
Which the Borough Manager. Can supersede the Borough Code.
Say again?
I don't believe that New Freedom Code can supersede the Borough Code.
But there's difference of a state of emergency and a snow emergency. That's where you're getting held up here. State of emergency exists when you're getting 12 inches of snow and you're getting a hurricane or there's rioting or flooding or anything else. That's a state of emergency. You're talking about, you're conflicting the two and you're looking at, I don't even, I don't even honestly know why we're still having this discussion.
Me either. I think we should, I think we should have it during the executive session and not bother these people.
It's not executive session material.
It is for me.
Well, okay, what you mean, you want to reference the Borough Code, reference the section where it says you can discuss a snow emergency in executive session. Where does that meet the definition of executive session?
You can't, it doesn't qualify to go into executive session on, to talk about snow emergencies. Kim, you would probably be okay with calling a snow emergency if this had happened like at the end of January, where there was this amount of snow and ice. And then you were probably going to get more snow and ice on top of it. And it was going to be, you know, zero degrees for the next two weeks. And it would just continue to get worse. But when Donnie, what Donnie looks at when they make this call is, what's the weather going to be like the next few days? And that's why it was called to not clear the streets from vehicles because they had enough room to clear what they had to clear. It was going away today. And there's not a real good likely chance that we're going to have another snow. So I think we need to consider the impact on citizens when we start calling things an emergency when it wasn't an emergency.
But you know that after the fact, at the time, they were.
No, we knew, we knew that it was going to be 50 to 60 degrees today. We knew.
But Saturday and Sunday was zero with 45 to 50 mile an hour winds.
And the cyclone bomb that they were talking about with the winds. There was a 70-plus car pileup in PA on the highway.
Up north.
Uh huh.
None of those initiatives adopted a state of emergency. Because that was my opinion. We didn't have a state of emergency call.
Everyone around us did. And it was called, they were all called by the mayor. Jacobus.
The mail service didn't run.
Southeast, southwest.
Well, the mail service didn't run that day. We lost power for a brief time that day. And unless you have a crystal ball to know, you know, what was, what was to stop a five-car accident coming down Constitution on the curve there? Well, there's always accidents.
But that's not.
A snow emergency.
That, that would not have.
That maybe would have allowed somebody to maybe not go out that was going to go out. It would maybe would help our citizens that, you know.
How would it, how would it have told somebody, don't go out? They're still going to go out if they need to go out.
A snow emergency doesn't stop people from traveling.
On Friday, it could have alerted the citizens to say, you know, well, I don't have that much firewood up here. I should maybe bring some firewood. They think of the snow, you know, we're going to get this amount of snow.
The first snow emergency that I, that I saw an email about Kim declaring, definitively declaring a snow emergency was Saturday at noon.
It was Friday. I have it right here on my phone.
I didn't get it.
It was Friday.
It was Friday. She got it and I sent it out to everybody.
Oh, you mean the one that said you can declare? I don't want to, I don't want to argue the point. If you, if you, if this council would like to change the ordinance, then we can change the ordinance to have the mayor declare a snow emergency. I have no problem with that whatsoever. But under the current ordinance written, it can either be done by Stan Walters or the borough manager.
Stan did. He contacted me to do that. And no, he can't declare an emergency. He does not have that power under schema.
I read, I read, I read what he wrote, Kim. He said that you can do it. There was no reason.
That was his recommendation, that we can do it if we want to. He was giving us.
A recommendation is different than doing it. Saying that you can do something is a possibility. Saying that you have to is different.
Well, it was a red code alert.
I don't even know what that means.
I talked to, I talked to him. He was recommending it. I talked to him on the phone.
Well, if he's recommending.
Why didn't he call the office? Why didn't he call me as myself?
Because he is in charge of calling me because I'm the emergency operations director.
Two days later, now he called you and told you to do it. That's news to everybody here.
Oh, no, that was the day of.
You never said that. You never put that in any email. You never called down here and said, I talked to Stan and he's telling us now we need to do that. Did you? No. That's a totally different story now.
He is not going to say we need to.
You just said, he told you to do it.
He told me I can do it. I have the authority to do it. Because I'm the emergency operations manager.
No, you're not.
Then who is?
Stan.
No, he's not.
Do you have a letter from the governor of Pennsylvania declaring Stan Walters the executive management director?
He's the EOC.
No.
Yes. He's the EOC. That's why I don't want to take up all these people's time.
For what it's worth, the Borough Code references, I'm talking about the power under emergencies. It references back to Emergency Management Code. And the disaster emergency has definitions. Affect situations that affect seriously the safety, health, or welfare of a substantial number of citizens in the Commonwealth, including operation, the use of essential public facilities, in such magnitude or severity as to render essential state supplementation of county local efforts, a resource exerted or utilized, da-da-da, have been caused by forces beyond the control of man by reason of civil disorder, prior disturbance caused by factors not foreseen and not known to exist when appropriation those were enacted. We're talking about a difference.
It's a pain, it's a pain, it's a disaster.
Well, it's, it's talking about a difference in a subjective view of what's an emergency and what isn't. You may have believed it was, other folks may have not. I mean, that's really what we're coming down to. Some folks saw that, what would happen on Saturday morning as an emergency, some didn't.
Would it have hurt anything to declare one from Saturday morning at 7:00 till Saturday evening?
That's sad. You would have impacted a couple hundred people, yeah. Apparently, there's a difference of opinion on that as well. That's not a legal call.
That they can't park on a snow emergency route because it's snowing? That's what it's for.
For three inches, four inches, whatever it ended up being.
Well, by the, you can't, by the time you declare it, it's too late if you wait for six inches. You have to be, you know, the precursor to an emergency is what you get from the weather service in Penn State, which was four to six inches, 45 to 50 mile an hour winds, heavy drifting, followed by below-zero temperatures. To me, that's pretty close to a snow emergency if I ever heard one.
But Kim has the chief elected official.
Where is that term from?
Right there on the resolution that he signed that you grew up. Right there, right under his name, chief elected official.
I didn't draw that up.
Chief, did that say Kim Butcher?
That, that term doesn't appear anywhere in the Borough Code.
Yes, it does. I'll show you.
Okay.
I'm going to show you.
On December 13th, when you adopted the plan of 21.
That's a form that comes from.
That comes from the state.
Yeah, well, I didn't draw that up.
Well.
It comes from the state.
We put it into our borough as a resolution. And ever since I've been involved, Kim has been the point person for emergency services.
He is by appointment of council.
Yeah, and that's.
No, by appointment of the Borough Code.
A solicitor judge was saying Title 35, as it relates to emergency management, the governing body of political subdivision may authorize the mayor to declare a local disaster.
I truly don't have a problem. But my biggest, my biggest problem was we got to a point where we had to make a decision. And we chose to go in two different ways because Kim thought he was authorized. I still don't believe that. And we thought that it was Andy or Stan Walters who should be making the call. And I still believe that the people with the experience on road treating should be the ones making the call. If you guys, right here, right now, want to say that we should have a resolution, or actually it would have to be an ordinance, that would make Kim responsible for calling snow emergencies, you can. But keep in mind that the next snow emergency probably should be called by the people who have the experience. That's all I'm saying.
Which schema contacted Kim via Stan to alert him to the situation.
I don't know who contacted whom, but I don't want to discuss that.
Do you have something to say?
Erica, I mean, hang on.
Very simple solution. We all work for the people in this borough.
I agree.
That's who we work for. So when the weather situation is as it is, we need to know, especially when I think about overseas, what's happening, what have you, the fastest way to get information. Now, when somebody calls me up, and I get called sometimes, I refer them to call the council. But I don't understand why we're arguing. The main thing is that the people were given the information that it might be an extremely hazardous situation. And we really shouldn't argue about it because we do represent the people. And the people that we have, a lot of older people in this neighborhood, including me, that rely on information. So that's what it should be. And we shouldn't be sitting here arguing in the open, as far as I'm concerned.
I agree, I agree with you.
But if we need to, but if we need to rewrite and do an ordinance to make it very simple, then we ought to give that some thought.
I make a motion to have an ordinance to allow our mayor, Kim Butcher, to declare snow emergencies and disaster declarations.
He already has the authority for disasters. That's entirely different.
What you're referring to, what I'm referring to is Chapter, the 207, which relates to snow emergencies. And correct, that would need to be done by ordinance. And again, if that's in place, that's what we will want.
Yeah, I just don't want the confusion.
I made the motion.
See, the motion on the floor.
Is there a second? Second. Do I have a roll call vote?
I'm sorry, did we have a second? Okay, any other discussion?
All right, so is the mayor going to tell me when I'm supposed to put the plows down?
I'm sorry?
Is the mayor going to tell me when I'm supposed to put out a plow down?
No, you know your job. You answer.
Just declaring a snow emergency.
All that means is that people have, people have to clear snow emergencies when I.
When I go out and tile the roads.
But it also gives you the opportunity, if your snow plow breaks down and it's stuck in the middle of the road, you don't have, you have the authority to have it fixed without having to go through all the rigmarole of getting a bid, getting this, getting, you need to buy extra salt. You have the.
Repairs are, repairs to vehicles happen no matter what. I think, I know what you're saying. You're talking about.
If it's a major thing and you have to rent another, another one. If you have to get extra people to help you, you have the ability to hire them without going through all the processes, you know, that you normally.
I'm fairly certain that would happen anyway.
I was not here this weekend. Where I was, it wasn't snow. So I'd like to hear from Donnie if you felt that all the cars needed to go out the road.
It's up to you. I can take the snow off the road, there are cars there or there were cars there. I have more problem collecting leaves because there's cars out there.
Well, if we had a crystal ball to know every storm that was coming beforehand, we'd always get it right, wouldn't we?
And the weathermen sometimes have it wrong. They call for four to six and we get two or three.
Sorry, roll call vote, yes, I did.
I just have a question regarding, once this is resolved, how do, how do we, the people, actually get notified with this?
So we would use, we would use Borough Website. We also use Savvy Citizen if you sign up for that.
I signed up for that. And I got the warning and the watch.
Yep, so you would get that notification via Savvy Citizen and the old website. We also use WGL Box 43.
And radio.
Try to hit as much as you can.
Okay, any other comments?
Is it an ordinance or a rule in New Freedom that you have to have the walks cleaned of the snow at a certain time?
Wait, it takes more hours.
It's enforced.
Yeah, well.
Because there is a lot of that. I noticed people were walking, they had to go out in the road, certain places, and come back in, and I thought, why? And I saw.
It's supposed to be within twenty-four hours after the end of the snow.
Well, they just wait for it to melt, I guess.
Under unfinished business tonight, we'll be talking about code enforcement policy and procedures.
My only further comment is I would prefer to have it with the people who have the knowledge and the experience. Five years from now, if you're no longer mayor and I'm dead, it's going to be somebody else coming up with.
And what if he's on vacation? He doesn't work on the weekends. What if, what if it's an emergency?
He had to work a lot this weekend.
Wait, whoa, here's a second. That phone and email is on me all the time, on the weekends, and on vacation.
And if he, and if, and if he is on vacation, then it would either be Wade or Donnie who would be, who would be the person to make the call.
This is the first.
But Kim isn't doing it solo, he's consulting with his schema.
That's not true. You always know there's somebody who.
I had one more thing before I know you're closing up, Sharon. My other thing was, keep it light. With all these old people, of course, I have a lot of friends that are old because I'm old. However, with the snow and what have you, it is the hardest thing to find someone to shovel the walk and to help you dig yourself out. So I was going to ask our borough manager, or you, Mr. President, if we can do something, like if there's a list of some young people that want to make some money during the winter time, and would help some of these old people. So my friends are ninety-seven years old, they still cut their lawn by hand more, but snow shoveling is a little hot. And this old man can't do it. So I was trying to find someone that doesn't. So wouldn't it be nice if you had a list or something that they can call here and the kids can make some money and everything will be nice.
That might be something.
And now we're gonna say kumbaya, and we all will be nice to each other, right?
We've got a motion and a second.
Before we close the, I would just want to say that I don't think the process that we have is broken. I think it works. I don't think that anything different would have been justified this weekend as far as declaring anything. And to what you just said, there's probably two dozen emails from Saturday and Sunday at various hours that prove that he does work on the weekend and other hours, so I don't think that's a fair comment.
I agree.
Call the question.
Okay, without any other discussion, we're gonna have a roll call vote. We're gonna start there and do it this way, and that's.
Opposed.
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 I, oh, sorry.
We're going all the way?
Yeah, go, but to the end. Whether or not to change the ordinance.
The ordinance? I'm for it. I want to, I want to make it clearer so we don't have a problem. Our mayor is fantastic, he does it, and we shouldn't be having.
It was, it was a vote.
Opposed.
Needs to be clear.
I'm also opposed. The motion does not carry. That is all I had. Mr. Mayor, Police Department.
Police Department, last meeting, March, we had some questions on, you have a copy of the commission reports, number of incidents in all of our municipalities. Question did come up was to, and I think you started getting the balance sheet for Southern Regional. Question came up as to detectives. Because the SRO for Southern, or Southeastern, is a detective, but he is paid as an SRO, his monetary salary is in there as a detective. So that is two detectives, not one, because we questioned, how come, you know, a detective is making a hundred and seventy thousand a year? It's not, it's two separate detectives. So that was a question that came up.
And that was because he shouldn't give up his title.
Correct, just because he's an SRO. And sometimes he does work as a detective to help out if, when school's out, or holidays, or if it's necessary, like when we had the arsonist in New Freedom, then everybody was working. So far, last month, no one was off, none of the officers was off for COVID. We do have a serious situation. I think what they're calling it is red bus runs, or bus red runs. In the last, less than three months, we have had eighty-two occasions where people have passed a bus while they were stopped with the red lights on. And we're getting real close to some, somebody's gonna, some kid's gonna get hurt or killed. So the police are aware of it, the bus drivers in Southern, and all these school districts have brought it to the chief's attention. They're gonna look at where the problems are. They've asked people to please, you know, if you could get a picture of a, of a car that's, that's running through a red light, get a picture of the car, you might not get the license plate, but a description helps. If you see it happen, call the police department. If it's in Shrewsbury Township, some folks out there might be listening, or other than New Freedom, call chief, call the department here, he will forward the information to the Pennsylvania State Police. It is, I believe, a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, loss of license, and it could, it could be jail time. And could be a lawsuit, you know, if some child is hurt or injured. You know, we're not in that much of a hurry, you know? Leave a little earlier for work, most everybody knows, you know, where the bus stops are or should. You know, it's, it's been a real big problem, eighty-two.
And all these incidents, eighty-two, it says nobody got a plate number or anything?
Oh, yeah, there's a bunch of them. Oh, yeah, they have a bunch of them. I'm sorry, this gentleman had a question.
Hi, my name's Ken. I've heard that some bus companies actually have cameras on their stop signs that flip out.
Only on the inside, they do not have cameras on the outside. Because of the weather, it, they just don't work. They're looking into something that might be shielded a little bit more to be able to do that. As of now, it's a problem. But if we have a snow day, they're gonna be covered with snow, you're not gonna see any air. They're, that's their next step. But their bus drivers are real upset about what's going on. I don't know if you follow Facebook, there's a major thread on Facebook about, about what's happening. I would suggest if you know it's happening at your local bus drop, stop, have your, have your camera ready.
Yeah, because where I live, it happens all the time.
Where are you, down on Front Street?
No, I'm actually outside, if you go down Stelt's Road, I live about two miles. Yeah, so, I mean, there's a straightaway there that, I mean, I'm always seeing them pass the buses.
I know, there's a problem on Main Street, and I don't know if it is allowed to put up signs for, you know, bus stop ahead of time. People fly over Main Street, come down, there's a bus stopped in the middle of Main Street. Somebody's gonna, they're either gonna rear end it, or there've been some real close calls. That person flying over doesn't have a choice but to go around the bus or rear end them. So it's, it's really turned into a major problem.
Did these people, as I said, did they go to the magistrate, did they go to Lindy Sweeney, and did she, did she find them? Is that how it works?
I, no, I think, well, they issue a ticket, you know, at the police.
I can't imagine she would throw a book yet.
Oh, she, she, I know her, she would. She would.
Yeah, a large, a large number of those end up in summary convictions appeals, and they all, the judge understands all his nails on them. They don't, they don't put up the.
So I want, you know, people out there to know, you see a bus and it stopped and it's red, the flashers, you better stop because it's, it's not worth it for a couple of minutes to lose your license and, or, and/or go to jail. Or end up naming or killing a child.
About six years ago, I was one of the callers. My grandchildren were out at England Road, at the corner of England Road and Belvedere. And a guy came flying by, you know, a really unusual car, it was an Element, you don't see much of it. So I asked around to go on to, and I said, it might go on to this, this one guy that's a senior in high school, so I called the high school. And he got reprimanded. And he didn't have his car at school anymore. And I, and I think it might be on that, but at least something got done.
Something got done, and we need to, the, the fact that there were eighty-two of them documented in less than three months, you know, it's crazy. That is crazy.
Isn't it points taken off your license also?
Five points. You would think that people would.
Also, finance for the police department, the cash reserve, there's a cash reserve for part-time officers. They moved sixty-nine hundred dollars from the general fund into the reserve fund. Apparently, the last quarter, there is no money to be refunded for, I think, either health insurance or for workers' compensation. The reserve, I think, they, they put some in reserve, but they're not allowed by law to keep more than, than ten percent of the budget in reserve. We're still having IGA, we're very close to getting that straightened out. I don't know, did you meet with chief today?
We did, yeah. It was a good meeting.
Okay, I know the chief would like to keep things pretty much the way they are, but if you could have anything to say about that.
Well, there, there's, there's a discrepancy between whether or not we want to stick with the PPU system or if we want to switch to ours. Personally, to me, it does, does not matter at all because PPU's are just blocks of time. They're just blocks of hours with all the administrative functions. The chief likes to use that, it's not broken, there's no reason to fix it. I think we keep the PPU's, that's gonna be my.
And let the chief run the department. That's gonna be a part of the IGA. If any council has a problem or question, it goes strictly through the mayor, from the mayor to the chief. Now, of course, if you've got to see something going on, you know, you call nine-one-one and they'll respond. You don't go through me, but if it's a question from somebody, a resident, a citizen, and you need an answer, we don't, he doesn't need twenty-seven people giving him a call about the same thing, so.
That could be you or Erica, right?
Well, it's supposed to be the mayor according to the IGA. That's it, you answered a lot of questions about the EMS truck, gas, they're okay with that. Okay, thank you. Next up, manager's report.
I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things in the report that you have in front of you. One item, I mentioned the slider tank replacement and possibly looking at additional borrowing. If you recall, we did submit a letter of intent to Pima regarding hazard mitigation for possible funding for that water tower, water tank replacement. I kind of thought that was dead in the water, however, on Friday, we received the authorization to move to the next round of applications, so that's good news. And hopefully, we'll get that application in, and that would, if awarded, would reduce any additional borrowing if needed. So that is good news.
And the grant is three point nine mil.
That's what we requested, we requested the full amount.
So it's, it would be a real big benefit to everybody in New Freedom.
Absolutely. As far as talks with the other municipalities regarding the sewer users group, we did, we're working with our K and K on that possible improvements to the plant regarding the process. We did communicate that to the other members of the group, and we've received really any comments back. So we're just gonna keep them informed at this point until we have enough information to come back and hold another meeting with that group.
You know, you know, the meeting with our K and K is?
I believe it's the, I want to say it might be March twenty-third.
Okay, that, I don't, I didn't have that.
I'll, I'll send you.
Okay, all right.
Crosswalk improvements, I feel like we've been talking about that forever. We're finally, have final approval from Penn Dot for the installation of those crosswalks. What we're looking at now is rather than, because we need to bore underneath the railway tracks for the ballards, for the indicators, that means we would have to, EUC, so what we're looking at now is just a solar option, so we don't have to bore underneath the tracks. That was pretty much already included in the package, really won't be much of a change to the cost, but the goal here is to get that out to bid, hopefully by the end of this month. That will align with the twenty-twenty-two street proof project, so hopefully we can maybe even have the same contractor complete the work, get everything done during this construction season.
What, what specific streets were these?
Franklin and Main. Franklin and Main at this point. Again, that's just to kind of establish the template to move out, and then keep that same uniform design throughout the borough, especially along the Trail of Ford.
Yeah. I do have one question, the sign that's been out there, sitting on the front of SCAM in the history. It was a cat that had nine lives, I think it lost its last life today sometime in time. I don't, is it, I don't know what they cost, I don't know that, I think it was done through a youth, a youth group, a younger, the robotics group, who I think got it from the state.
Correct, they had to be requested from the state.
Okay. Is it worth requesting another one with this kind of line, does that have something? Because clearly people aren't paying attention to signs, so I think it'd be worth it to have something because it's doubled over and I, I think the breeze might knock it over.
Yeah, we can see, I mean, if it's something that they have in stock, that they're willing to provide, just, and then, you know, maybe we could even, if it's not, didn't use one of its nine lives by the time we get these installed.
Well, to the point where I actually stopped and picked it up to go bury it. It was, it was pretty bad.
Yeah, it's just about laying dead on the.
Exactly, yeah. Dave, you're puzzled. Okay, you know what you're talking about? Okay.
Is there, when are they gonna do a patch job on Singer where they dug up? Somebody's gonna lose an axle.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the, that stormwater improvements are ahead of the, the paving project. Are you guys doing tent?
Yeah, within the next week here, we're gonna be putting modular in there.
Are you, because right now, boy, it's.
Well, yes.
Yeah, whatever, today.
Yeah, it's not pretty.
We'll, we'll get a photo in here, and within about a week or so here, we'll have the contractor come back in. Ready for his town floor, and I'll be ready for being.
On the bright, bright side, people are slowing down on Singer now. I think that, that makes it worse, you're better off to fly over. Good.
Unless I have any questions on any other, any other items.
Dave? Over the past month, I worked on the stormwater management movements that has been drafted for consideration later. I had a couple of specific items that took back the engineer, he answered theirs today, so we should have a final version ready back to Andy here pretty shortly. And last month, at the end of last month, we put together, we put out a, our presentation to the newly elected officials. Fortunately, you guys are on the south side of the county, so you probably got stuck on eighty-three when the crane. so you probably got stuck on eighty-three when the crane hit. We were tight overpass, weren't able to make it. One of the things we did discuss was how, uh, emails in to all members of Borough Council and there being discussion will be violation of the sunshine. So it sounds like you may have had a violation of sunshine law over the weekend. So be careful about doing that because if you copy more than a quorum of members of Borough Council and have a discussion back and forth, it is technically a violation of sunshine law.
There was no discussion.
Was there back and forth? No. Was there?
Not between council members.
So now we're agreeing.
Not between council members.
I think we were on mute.
Well, if everyone has a chance to look at that, whether or not they're participating in it or not, it constitutes a violation of sunshine law because of quorum participating, consideration, or liberation of a, of a rural issue.
What if, if it's not an issue though? Like if you're just, uh, we're gonna have a meeting Monday.
If it's, if it's for, if you're going to do it for informational purposes, do it for informational purposes. Do not hit reply all if you're getting back, okay? If you're, if one member wants to get back to Borough Council President, they're able to do that, okay? If one member wants to, if you want to communicate through Andy as the Borough Manager, please do that, but do not communicate back and forth because if someone wanted to accuse you of violation, one, it's very easy to get copies of those because they're right under the right to know law, they are public records, and they would have to be disclosed, and two, it would be a violation of sunshine law. So I'm just encouraging you not to have conversations like that via email because many people communicate that way nowadays and make a lot of decisions electronically, and that defeats the whole purpose of the sunshine. So, we're waiting for it.
No, that's good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Engineers' report. Any questions? What?
Still working through getting everything aligned at this point. Um, still looking at options.
As far as the testing?
Just as far as, yeah, just as far as the control. Getting better.
For water?
Do we have any wells that are not in use that could be?
Yeah.
Wells in use that could be?
Yeah, right.
Not in use that could be.
We have four wells that are all, they're all being used.
So we just have four wells. We don't have three other ones or one other one somewhere that hasn't been used or tapped or?
I have them on rotation. They usually go on a two-week rotation so we don't run out of water or run them all the time. So, and we're always checking the depths and everything like that, so.
One, one thing, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no. I was just saying, we rotate them around to give them a break and better recovery, you know, so we haven't, never had any issues.
One, one thing that we just brought up, uh, tonight, and Dave, Dave is gonna look at it, is, um, how do we terminate our contract with, uh, York Water because we're spending?
Seven hundred thousand.
Yeah. Well, seven hundred, no.
It's, well, it's seven thousand a month.
Yeah.
So that's between seventy thousand a month.
Yeah, so, yeah. But anyway, we, we haven't used it yet. It's been years and years and, uh, rather than spending money on, you know, we would leave the connection.
That can use what?
The thirty thousand gallons of water that we buy every month.
But that's a memory you can use, yeah.
We, we use it. It's just.
Right, you use, this is.
Yeah, we're getting thirty thousand a day.
I was gonna say, it's not a month.
Yeah, we have to pay for nine hundred thousand a month.
Yeah.
If we use or don't use.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
Make sure we at least get to nine hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So do.
If it's over that a hundred thousand, we gotta pay.
Do certain homes get York Water? Is it all just mixed up at the plant? Do you know where it goes?
It's basically over on the, uh, I'd say like the northeast side of town is where it comes in. And you're talking about thirty thousand, so if you look at a household that uses, I don't know, five hundred gallons a day or whatever, it doesn't take long to add up. We have a hundred houses. It doesn't go very far. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it's just mixed up with our water?
Oh, yeah, it mixes in with our water, yes.
Okay.
Do the ones that tanks.
And that is, we, we test that every Wednesday. Uh, York Water has to do their own testing because they're, they're selling the work to us. But we go out every Wednesday. We have a certain thing they do with D and P. We check for pH, uh, temperature of the water, the chlorine, uh, all that.
Before it mixes with our water?
Yes, mhm. Yeah. Now, we're required to do that, but now York Water has to do a, they have a daily that they have to do.
And they do, my thought is they do water and they do it every single day.
Yeah.
So all homes in New Freedom get a mixture of York Water, New Freedom water?
I'm not saying that all homes do because we're only getting thirty thousand. You know, that's what I'm saying. Like, if a household uses five hundred gallons a day or even two fifty, you know, that, that thirty thousand will go very far.
Right.
You start adding up the homes, so.
So that's the max a day you take is thirty thousand?
Yes.
Not over that?
No.
If we have, if you have a connection.
I'm, I'm a late person here. Does it just shut off when it knows it's got thirty thousand? I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's on a, uh, there's a pressure standing valve that's up there at the pit, and then it's set through a SCADA system that is a computer system that, uh, and I can, I can like ask for more water on it if I want to or, or ask for less.
Have you ever had to ask for more?
No, no. Unless, uh, if the system's down and I had to take that amount to get our nine hundred thousand or we're gonna be billed for it. So I always make sure that if the unit's down, I get that water so at least we're gonna, we're gonna get paid, we get paid for it, uh, using it.
If that thirty thousand a day never came again, how would we be?
I think we'd be all right.
That's the issue.
This kind of brings up another question that I had regarding water.
Yeah.
Um, I wanna say it was the beginning of twenty twenty, there was an absorbent amount of water used by, um, a certain person that came and paid their bill, and in September of that year, I think of twenty-one, I think you brought up that Summit Grove was that person that they were looking into having their pipes replaced and so forth. And I can't find anywhere else where it's ever been mentioned again. Has that been rectified?
They've actually been doing a great job. So they've been making repairs. Uh, we've been writing letters of support for grants for them to get those repairs up to date. We have a meeting scheduled for later this month. They have, uh, they have their set of plans ready to go for, uh, basically complete replacement of their lines. But since they put some temporary fixes in, I, we haven't had any issues. They've been on top of it, so, you know, we're kind of waiting till.
Their bill's like down twenty, down to like twenty-five percent of what it was.
How many less gallons a month would you say they're using? I mean, because I heard it was just, it was astronomical.
Well, they had, they had a couple of leaks that adds up, you know, but, uh, but they were paying. I mean, I guess.
Well, yeah, they were paying, but that means we gotta get more water from maybe somewhere else that we didn't need to and everybody's getting tagged.
Right. Um, we never ran out of water because of their leaks, but, you know, it was just costing them a lot of water or a lot of money with having the leaks. They just need to upgrade their system, that's all.
I know usage has been.
Don, have you heard, um, that people in New Freedom are having their water heaters replaced more often than anywhere else? It's come up several times. It started last year, I heard about it.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
And, and I'm, I'm one of, I'm one of those.
Water heater hardly at all, so.
Several problems.
Several, several.
Yeah, and, and I, I have, I've had problems. Um, I've replaced it, uh, almost five times.
Do you flush your water heater?
No, no, you know, I replaced, you know, and, and I went, well, Kenny Giel is a buddy of mine. We talked, I said, my gosh, every time you turn around, you're coming here and you're replacing, you know, it's just myself and my daughter. And, um, he said, yeah, you know, a lot of people are complaining about it. Is there something in the water? Uh, the chemical or something that, that eats it? Because the bottom just, you know.
No, I, I don't know what to say because like.
I'm, I'm just asking if you've heard anything.
But I mean, I'm going fifteen years of my lawn water heater, so.
See, I'm, I'm probably about thirteen years and it's filter, filter free.
I've had, I've had a old one that was very, very expensive. It, I got less than half the amount out, you know? And, and Kenny and I talked about it, you know, because I knew him when he was in plumbing school. And, because I was complaining, that's a, that's a lot of water heaters. And I don't put it on the highest temperature or anything like that.
There's, there's a rod inside your water heater that's supposed to be replaced. I, I don't, I'm, I remember the loss. I can't remember.
So is it an official annual?
Yeah, it's an annual.
On the inside? So in other words, you get the plumber to look for this rod?
Yeah, it's actually in the top of your tank and it hangs down and it, it basically keeps the.
Because I noticed that the temperature and the way I'm getting the water, I'm getting ready to bucket another water heater.
So that's why Summit Grove has not started their pipe replacement. They put in some repairs to kind of stop the bleeding.
They've replaced some of their piping.
So they've replaced some already?
Yes.
Okay, so they're on the road and having that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're, we're, we're kind of, we're actually kind of amazed that they, they, they actually are really happy that they're doing it because, I mean, they were spending way too much money on water.
Was it sad? I know a lot of, a lot of people leave right now. They don't stay there through the winter so that you don't think that's the cause it's went down?
No, they winterize during, they, they drain some of it out during the winter time. So they're not, but then in springtime, they fire it up and they don't realize they have leaks until they get their bill and, you know.
I know some people that.
They're, they're doing well.
Okay, okay.
I got a quick question on the York Water thing. It sounds like the, the idea is, is to get rid of York Water because we don't need it. Isn't it there for an emergency in case we do need it and we don't have capacity from the wells?
Right, yeah. It, it would not be a complete, uh, you know, disconnected remove. It would be the potential to, uh, basically stop that flow only and use it only on an emergency basis similar to what TruSpare does. So the options there, Sillister Jones, looking at the agreement, um, I read it one way, but I would like his interpretation on it. Yeah, to look at if, if that's an option. Obviously, if it is, we don't need that and it's not gonna put additional strain on the existing well and, and distribution system. It's gonna save a lot of money.
A tremendous amount of money for the taxpayers.
Well, I, I, I agree.
Very concerned with what the school was doing.
I do want to make sure we don't lose the.
Yes, every year, we need to start looking at, at cost savings for our citizens, and I think that is a very good place to start.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna remove that because if there is, if something does happen to it.
Yeah, we have a tank that goes down or something. At least we can have an agreement that we could tag onto them and take in water. Because if we had to pay for bulk water to come in on, on trailers and stuff, that would cost fortune. At least this one here, where we hook up to them if we have an issue, we can draw water from them, you know, just contact them and.
We just need a new agreement and, and the agreement will be an as-needed, and it'll probably cost us more per gallon, but if we only use it when needed, it, it's gonna be a big deal. So we're saying money in the long.
When is the current contract agreement?
Do.
Yeah, so the initial agreement was done in nineteen ninety-eight. It was a twenty-year agreement, so that took it to twenty eighteen. The contract is worded that after twenty eighteen, it renews on ten-year cycles. However, the cancellation language in there says two years before the end of the initial term. It does not speak that I could find of renewal term.
We're thinking that if we give them two years notice, then that would probably be sufficient. That's what Dave is looking at.
Have you printed it out yet?
Yeah, I have a copy, I have a copy on my desk as well from the two.
I think that would be, um, good news for the citizens.
Yeah, especially with the water tank coming. Uh, where do we, uh, wastewater?
And the PA one call markings, those were the flags that we can take down. Is that what that was?
Yeah, I mean, those are, that will be reoccurring pretty much every month because you have somebody if they want to, um, you know, cable TV gets replaced, they got fence installed, you get a building renovation, um, they're still gonna have to.
But I mean, for our, is it this, was this for our or the whole borough was that, or this is separate from people Wayne Kate? Like what you just said.
Uh, this could, this was probably a combination of GIS plus just normal everyday PA one calls. It could be an emergency call too. There's probably a couple of those last month. If somebody hits something, all the utilities have to go out and mark.
Questions on that? Signing the code enforcement? I, what was it? I was, I was talking to, um, Andrew earlier about the basketball hoops. I mean, I, I understand, you know, during the snow removal, you know, you can't have it in the street right away, but on, in, on, under normal circumstances when we're not having the snow, snow issues or anything, I mean, I, I don't see any reason why we can't have basketball hoops sitting where the kids can play with them.
I agree.
Other than, some of them are very hard to see.
But if they're off.
You mean if they're just hanging over the road?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're not gonna put them in the road, but if you set them back, you know, far enough off the road.
Right, yeah. It's fine.
You can attract a trailer, but they're gonna hit it. They're taller than that.
That's why we make, that's why we make them clear the bushes to, what is it, fourteen feet, nine feet over the sidewalk? There's a clearance.
Over the road and the sidewalk.
Yeah, the road and the sidewalk, so they're gonna hit it.
I have a question. The church of Jesus Christ Saturday Saint, when I like Campbell Road, it's going down there. And so they received three PUs.
It's based on the number of bathrooms they have and the number of people they're gonna have on church.
But they received those from us?
Yeah, that sewer connection goes out, uh, through Hamilton. Actually, it, it goes through the properties there and their latals pretty well. It ties in. But yeah, it, it's just sewer connection.
How far out Campbell does our sewer connection go?
That, that would be the end of it.
We'll get in trouble with. Frisberry for selling.
Well, no, this, this all, this. Yeah, and this actually ties directly into our system.
Yeah, so it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Where do they get their water from?
York Water.
It's a York Water.
Yes, yeah. York Water ran up through, um, strawberry fields to get out to, yeah. Yeah, well, I'm not gonna get into that. I don't live there anymore, so. A lot of people were upset that they shut their wells down, made them go down to York Water.
Still, we're, yeah.
I'm upset and I don't live there anymore.
I know.
So on the code enforcement report, I see that violations were present and public works was asked to remove several.
Well, but it sounds like from what I'm hearing tonight that we don't want those removed.
Well, actually, they were asked to remove it, but they haven't done it?
Not as of yet, no, just because of everything else that's been occurring, but, um, you know, if, if the consensus is that if it's not out on the road, we're not removing it, and I think that's the direction we need, uh, before we go out with it.
It's like a compliance date of January seventh. We're in March.
Well, it's, again, during the snow season, I think, I think they have to be obligated to move it away so that we can push snow up. Because otherwise, it's just gonna get pushed, knocked down anyway. But once we get out of, out of the snow season, I agree with Kim that, you know, obviously if there's, uh, if it's hidden behind a tree and somebody might hit it, but these are. But these are pretty much.
I'm intrigued.
No, no, yeah, I mean.
So does the ordinance need to be changed to have a date range in the ordinance?
Probably just accepted it.
I've just got the instruction.
Does that have to be amended or changed, or you just put something on it for a website, maybe between these months, it's okay, not okay here?
Well, I think, you know, Dave always said that with property maintenance agreement, you could have selective enforcement for things like this. In other words, if this is not a nuisance.
I think that's confusing for the homeowner though. What are you, what are you, what are you going to name that's selective and not selective?
Black and white.
You know, this is okay, but well, it's not okay, you know, I, I think that's not good.
Speaking of that, what is, what is the official ruling of businesses in a, in a housing development? In other words, somebody working on three, four cars and a motorcycle. And we're doing it halfway in the garage and we're doing it three o'clock in the morning. And then we got containers where we empty oil and oil runs down the driveway. And it just goes on and on. And, and that's on one street, meaning exactly.
Those can be police and fire calls. If someone's bothering you at three, someone's bothering you at three in the morning, that's a police call. If someone's dumping oil on the, on the driveway, that's, that's a fire.
Then we have another street where there is a building behind, the building is actually bigger than the house. And it's, they're doing a detailing, you know, with the colors and stuff. And when it rains, you, and I walk the dog, you can see colored, you know, from the grease and everything. A residue, you know, from, from, you know. Now, what is the regulation? I remember for years, I, I called, you know, nothing has been done. And it's getting worse, but I want to be able to say exactly in my, across street for me, it's a rental house. Now, what can be done about that? Do we have something in writing that states what you can, what kind of business you can have on your property?
Yours is strictly zone residential, so yeah, that would be, that would be a sounding violation if it were other than a small cottage type industry.
See, it's a small rancher. And I'm telling you, three o'clock in the morning, I wake up, my dog's barked like crazy. And, and then I see all these containers, you know, with the, with the fluid where they're draining the oil and what have you. And, and I spoke to two young men and I discussed it with them and of course, they just ignored it, you know. I, I've been at this now, let's see, my husband's dead four years, four years. Now, what is the, what is the official ruling? What kind of business can you have? Because they're, they're, first of all, it's not their house. They're renting. I even contacted on several occasions, the person that owns the house. And he doesn't care because he's getting his rent.
I wonder if there's any ordinance you can have, I mean, in Pennsylvania, you can have a no impact home-based business and depending on what they're doing, we have to find that out.
It sounds like they're impacting.
It's getting worse.
But it depends on what the definition is, is if it's, if it's running, if they don't have any customers, if they're drawn by people who live in the home. I mean, there are very specific requirements that may be met or may not be met. Whether or not they're, I mean, do they have a sign for a business?
They don't have a sign. However, in the backyard, they have big evergreens. They actually have two cars that are hidden in the evergreens. In the evergreens, I sometimes see the fender when I walk the dog.
So, so perhaps we can.
And everybody's complaining, but then they're afraid of what, what can happen to them, you know?
Can we have Wade down and look at it?
They say we need to, yeah.
Yeah.
Come, come around and.
This is the first that, I mean.
Come and, come and visit me late one afternoon and, and you, you can see it.
Well, can, can you?
That address is on this report.
And now, is it? It's number one, isn't it Marshall, number one Hancock Court?
No, no, it's three.
Is it three? Three Hancock Court.
Three Hancock Court.
Because I'm number two.
You can see the backyard from my yard. Just wait a couple of weeks, the grass will be.
Oh, yes.
Two feet high, which it runs most years.
Yep, two feet high up here.
Well, I mean, the, the first thing is that we need, we need to know about it. We need to know that there's a complaint.
My husband complained about it. He was already sick then.
I mean, I've been here over a year and this is first I'm hearing about it.
Well.
But.
That was during Chinese time, but let me tell you, I've complained many times.
Well, can you, I mean, if you email Andy the address.
So I can email you and tell you, you check, because, yeah, you're right. Fire and stuff because they drink beer, you know, in the garage and they got the music going in the garage. Yeah, that could be. You could have a fire. I never even thought about the fire. And in the back, the back is, I mean, all the neighbors are complaining, but they're afraid because they're older people. That something might have, you know, if somebody might do something, so we don't want to do anything. So they said, you know, do something.
Start the process.
Okay. I will send you the email. I can even get some signatures, if, if, but my neighbors will be willing to.
So back to basketball hoops, photo one and three, you know, they're not in the street. The structure where it touches the ground isn't in the street. They're not, you know, constructed by a tree.
Or overhanging street.
It is overhanging.
It, it is, but during.
Garbage truck will hit that.
How many houses have the borrowers touched, taken up, basketball hoops? I mean, I, I don't, I don't, that's a, a trash can would be there, but not, not put over trash cans. I mean, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the way we look at it is the ordinance is structured in the right way. It's in the right way, even though it might not be in the roadway. But, you know, this goes back to most things. If we have the ordinance and we have the direction to counsel, that's what we'll do.
So you were saying in the summer months, let the kids play.
Yeah, I think almost happened, but.
We had, I went to Stewartstown meeting this month, last Monday. And there were three youth there, ask them for a skateboard park. There's nothing to do. We need something to do. We're getting in trouble.
Yeah, we have same, we have the same people.
Want things to do and I, I don't know, I just, uh.
I am.
Well, I, you know, I, I'm the one to start the thing with basketball hoops. And my concern is, number one, it sends a wrong idea that the street's a place to play because it's made for vehicles, whether it's a car, motorcycle, truck, bicycle, whatever. If you have kids playing in the street, I'm not going to be for it because if some child gets hit playing basketball or some other game in the street that they think they could, they had in the street allows them to do that. You know, I'm just, I'm not going to be on board. I'm not going.
And when you look at where these basketball hoops are, those kids have to be in the road to be able to shoot.
You know, if they're playing basketball, they pay attention to traffic.
Yeah, they've got to be in the road. You should be shooting. And if I got, if I have a RV. Say I have an RV and I drive down there at night and I, the top of my RV hits that one of those, who, who's responsible?
And I don't want to have some parent come to RV and say, my child was fit playing basketball in the street that you, you allowed it to happen. You, you gave the okay to do that and I'm not.
You're absolutely right. Yep, you both are.
I'm not going there.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I've had a basketball, a pole up for our kid, was up at the end of the driveway.
Drive it.
I guess they have to haul them away. So I guess they have to haul them away then.
Yeah, they don't.
That's what you're saying, you know? Unhappy residents.
Rather have an unhappy resident than an injured child or got a bad.
Well, we talked about that. I don't see them out on, you know, Main Street, Constitution, Frank, you know, they're not putting them on those streets.
It's a street where people, where kids, where people drive cars. You know how some kids drive cars now too? They're not paying attention like they ought to be. They're on their phone, talking with somebody, all it takes, just like that.
We just have conversations about school buses. People not paying attention to school buses.
Okay, I guess that's the direction.
They call their skateboards over there because they could fall, hit their head on the street and road. I mean, come on, I mean, where do you stop?
Yeah, I know.
Somebody don't tie their shoes and they fall down. Well, whose fault is it? You know, I mean, come on.
Well, it won't be the borough's fault because we didn't make them tie their shoes. Tell you that.
Well, they're on a skateboard, don't have a helmet on.
Yeah, well, number one, you can talk to the parents for one thing.
You could with a basketball hoop too.
Well, then they shouldn't be on the street on a skateboard either, should they?
Stay calm away. That's the answer.
Just out of curiosity, real quick, has anybody noticed the turn when you come from Shrewsbury where the, you know where the used car lot is? From Shrewsbury, you make a right on Campbell Road.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Have you noticed what they've done there? Boy, I tell you, I almost had a bad accident.
What, you mean the way they park the cars?
No, no, when, when you turn where the light is and you turn to get onto Campbell, that corner. There is a triangular cement. It's this high.
It's part of the walkway.
There's the walkway there, but when they kick, they came this way towards me. And I was kind of squeezed in there with my car. You know how the cars, the fenders are real low? And it, it put a nice dent in my fender. I just wondered if anybody has noticed it. It's new, isn't it? How long is it there? I've noticed.
It was when the lights were.
Really?
Yep.
Well, I was, I was impressed.
That was part of the whole project.
That's township.
Yeah, they've gotten complaints from the fire department. They want them moved.
Oh, yeah.
Have you ever complained because it's kind of.
The fire trucks can't get around the corner. They can't get in, they can't get out.
It is so tight. When I was coming around and there was a truck and all this traffic coming this way. And I really, the only way that I had was to get there, you know?
Our fire department's complaining to the township.
So they have good, good. And we should just wonder. That makes me feel better that somebody did complain.
If it happens.
Do you want to move on to recreation then, and since we're going to talk about code enforcement under unfinished business?
Yeah.
I have a question on this one. Is that a word? I have a question on this statement, but we're not.
Oh, go ahead.
How many Franklin Square units are there?
Uh, townhouses or apartments altogether.
All together.
Hundred and forty-four.
Okay, I thought it was one forty. Okay, one forty-four. Are they all rented? They're, they've all got the people in there?
They're all.
As best as you.
Uh, they're all capable. Yeah, they're all capable of being rented at this point.
Okay, so they're capable. Okay, so for water usage, I was wondering, is everybody in there?
Apartments above the new buildings, obviously.
So those twenty?
Right.
Are they, does that include the one forty-four?
Uh, no.
So that would be one forty-four plus another twenty. So the only unoccupied right now are the twenty.
Plus those commercial and bar, which we don't, well, we know what one's going to be. We don't know what the other side's going to be.
And one of them is a brewery?
Yes.
And I had heard in the office that Wade was doing plans for two breweries?
Correct. The other one, uh, the other one is actually right below the apartments. Which is. No, no, the Berkenstein apartments where the mini storages and the Gunpowder Falls is moving there. So where Berkenstein flipped the apartment buildings, right below there, there's Jim, Laundromat.
I think the Laundromat's gone.
Yeah, I think it's in that building.
We're talking Franklin Square.
It's the other side of Franklin Square.
The other side. It's on Constitution Avenue.
Isn't that owned by Paulus? Isn't that Paulus property?
It is.
You're talking about Paulus, like, you know, almost like.
Two breweries.
Two separate, yeah.
Two separate breweries in Franklin Square.
Well, it's kind of, but not really. I mean, the one, Gunpowder is actually on a separate parcel, but it abuts the Franklin Square.
Is that closer to where that church used to be?
Yeah, it's on the old.
Side. The side of the crap. And the other ones go across the street from Blackies.
Yeah, so that's. Jump out.
From seven.
Right behind that.
Across the street from seven.
Yeah, like, oh, there, the front half. Okay, so those are the two. I couldn't, it's like, you could be on railroad, what, what is this brewery?
No, railroad is going to be a brewery. Farm brewery.
I hope he was looking in the zone in that one. Shouldn't be.
No, there is Commonwealth.
Yeah.
He does classic.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, recreation.
All right, we'll try to keep it pretty short and sweet to the bone here. Some representatives from, I keep wanting to say Team in History, but they're now Northern Central Rail. They want to work with the Rec Commission while doing some events and working together as far as advertising and some events coinciding with each other. They also mentioned that there was going to be some pre-rides for veterans on Memorial Day. The, the next item that, I know there was some contention over the last, I guess, two or three meetings was the farmer's market. As of right now, they plan to keep the farmer's market at Smith Woods, so up there at the community center. Uh, the market will begin on the second Saturday in May and will run bimonthly on the second and last Saturday of the month. They are coordinating their market with the, the Fireman's Hall for the chicken sale. Excuse me, which occurs on the last Saturday of the month, so they're kind of trying to get two events in one there to draw more people. Again, they had some discussion about Marge Goodfellow Park, Freedom Green, and they decided to stay up there. The indoor tennis program started on February sixth. It's been going extremely well. There was thirty-seven beginner players and twenty-six intermediate slash advanced players. And they netted approximately two thousand five hundred dollars. Pickleball, again, we spoke about that earlier. They are.
Just kind of a point of order, I guess. It says that it was a unanimous decision by all the commission that the courts remain solely for tennis. But really, what that should say is it was unanimous, unanimous decision by all the commission that we will recommend to council. Because Rec doesn't get to make that call, so when you guys are doing your committee on the pickleball, whether or not we line the courts. That's going to be your decision when you bring that back. The only other thing too is, and this is, this is kind of important. Uh, phase two of the park, right now, there really is like no phase two.
Yeah, that's, that's actually something I was going to speak about in a little bit. Because there's, in the past, a lot of confusion and I know I've been part of that just from before coming on council, reading things or seeing things and then not really educating myself to it. Um, so that was something I was going to actually bring up with.
That's why I keep trying to encourage members of Rec to come to council because they're going to have to come to council and say, this is what we want to do, what do you guys think?
Yeah. Uh, pickleball is continuing to be a success. They had approximately twenty-eight participants in February and netted five hundred sixty dollars. Uh, parade, save the date notices have gone out. Don't actually have the date on here. I don't recall what it was, but it was July.
Saturday after the fourth.
Yeah.
New Freedom Parade, July ninth, starts at four thirty.
There you go, thank you.
There'll also be a farmer's market that day, ten to one.
Um, so again, trying to pee back on events.
That's on my birthday. I'm going to have a big cake or not?
Throw, throw a cake at you?
The night.
Oh, all right. I'll get you a cake. I won't, I won't throw it at you though. Uh, concerts in the park, again, those were, dates were already communicated and I believe they, they provided you all that for the Sag City citizen calendar?
Uh, I, I mean, I have that through working on the sponsorship.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. I thought they said that they additionally sent that to you.
Okay.
All right, um, still working on finalizing. All right, um, still working on finalizing the food and beverage vendors. Um, Gilice has agreed to do the first and second concert, but are unavailable for the third. Um, so they've reached out some, to some other companies, uh, for that. Um, I think that was largely, um, the big issue. There was, um, some discussion about the money that comes in and whether that is, any of that money goes to the community center fund. Uh, so there's some back and forth and I think we've gotten that all resolved. Um, and everything is, everybody understands the situation with money now. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
Clarify if the Rec Council pays to use the community center.
They do.
They do pay to use the community center daily when they use it, for a daily fee, and their daily fee is fifteen.
Right now, they're paying fifteen dollars per usage for pickleball.
Per usage, is that going to be changing?
Well, that's, that's kind of why that's the next item on the agenda, is to discuss whether that, if that came up at Rec, whether, um, the borough would consider waiving that to allow them to have more money for the recreation.
Because what was said at that, at that meeting was three, or five sixty was taken in, but three fifty of that had to be paid to use the community center for pickleball, so if they're looking at raising a hundred thousand dollars, you know?
They're saying they're, they're trying their hardest and they're not making any money because they have to clean it, they have to put up the nets.
I said, "Bring that to council" about waiving it, and then I encouraged them to possibly, because they said that they reduced the fee to play monthly to twenty dollars, because people had went to the Y, didn't want to cut back. So I encouraged them to possibly raise the fee from twenty, uh, by, raise it by ten dollars with the outlook of the people that want this court outside so bad, you know, if we only pay ten more dollars a month, maybe the council could do something on the fee, so you're not expending three fifty a month on the fee to use it and maybe by the end of the year, you can have some money.
I mean, the only trouble that we, that we keep getting ourselves into, and I, and I don't, I certainly don't mind at all and I don't think anyone in the community minds, you know, giving a free use for a blood drive or giving a free use for the senior center, but there is a definite cost to the community center. We're actually losing money on the community center, we're taking money out of the general fund to, to pay for the community center if we give it, again, to Rec for free, because even when we get a Rec Director, the Rec Director needs to charge for programs in order to eventually cover their salary, because they're, they're only going to be covered under the grant for four years, so...
See, that's what I was, I was asking about tournaments, if they had tournaments, and at the tournaments, you know, we could have hamburgers and hot dogs or they could, um, you know, donate something for the new pickleball court, you know?
Oh, it's all kind of like, you know, the Rec Director hopefully will be...
Incorporate it that way.
Yeah, will hopefully be raising money, you know, for, for things that need to be done and for recreation. That's the hope. Um, I mean, it's, it's, I think, maybe we should, we could look at the... See, the problem is, is fifteen dollars probably isn't even a break even for the community center.
But I have a question, so if the senior center is already in there, Tasteful Occasions is in there, isn't the lights and heating and A C already in use?
Oh, yeah, I see what you mean, yeah, but I mean, it still has to be...
Different rooms.
Yeah.
I mean, your, your consumption still goes up because they're, they're in, that room would be vacant at the time if you're not renting it, so...
But it doesn't get shut off, HVAC doesn't get shut off?
Well, it goes from occupied to unoccupied, the old story, yeah.
Okay, so it's zoned.
Yeah, I mean, it's still technically running, it's just not running as high or low depending on who records. Really, I, I mean, personally, I can see both sides, but I think you just have to be, too. Yeah, you really can, but...
What's the sense in them putting all the effort and they're not making any money?
Well, we had that discussion alre...
Two hundred dollars a month.
Well, I mean, we had that discussion already, the, the idea of providing Rec isn't necessarily to make money. I mean, that's, you know, providing Rec for people, you know?
But don't you want them to raise money to fund other projects? I mean, how, I don't know how they can raise money, it's kind of like the, well, I mean, I think it's like the fire department closed down for two years.
There are some things you're going to raise money, there's, there's some places you're going to raise money and there's some that you're not. You know, tennis is an example, makes money, and it makes pretty decent money for being a Rec program. You know, we actually pay somebody to teach the classes, so, you know, so it's really making money for the people teaching plus for Rec. So they get twenty-five hundred dollars a season or somewhere in excess of that. Um, so that's one way, that's one place that makes money. Uh, pickleball could be a moneymaker, too, even if it's outside and we put in the outside pads, you could still charge to run the league. You could set up tournaments, like Inga said, and, you know, you could have, you can even have concessions there if you wanted to. I mean, there's ways that you can make money, but I think, you know, obviously, when you put in pickleball courts, you're going to be taking tax dollars and putting it in, into pickleball courts. I may never play pickleball, but I think it's still a good thing. So you're right, they have to make money, but I don't know that they, they, I don't think that everything is free and that's how you make money. I think you have to go find sources of revenue that you can bring in through fundraising activities and sponsorships and, and things like that.
Well, they said in their talking today, they, they pay, they, they take classes in pickleball, right, and they pay for that, so they got a revenue source there.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Well, up in, up here, they don't pay, other, pay for lessons, some of the older, experienced people just volunteer, you know, a couple of days or a couple of hours to get people that aren't, don't know how to play, going.
Well, I think they're talking about the Y, though.
Well, they're going to have to, that was from the Y, I think, they were talking about the Y.
I'm surprised, I was surprised that there are that many people.
I, I was very surprised, but I think they were talking about the Y. But I think it can be done, you know, if your heart is in it, because God help us, America is going through a heck of a rough time. So that's another thing to be considered, so we better start getting busy working and see how many of them are going to work along and do it. I think it can be done, positive thinking.
Yeah, but I mean, it is a lot of effort, you know, I mean, I, you know, I mean, um, I don't, I don't break my arm, pat myself on the back, but thirty years of field scheduling, if I had all those hours and they were paid hours, I could buy another drink.
Rich is up there, Rich Garvey's up there every day and he's mopping off the floor, he sets up the nets, you know, the other, a couple of weeks ago, they had the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, whoever was there, spilled stuff all over the floor and broken balloons and he had to clean all that up real quick while the pickleball people waited.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I mean, you know, like I said, it's, it's, um, you can't make everything for free, I mean, otherwise, what about tennis, why not make that free? Why not make, you know? Why rent spots out at the farmer's market, you know, it's, it's, you have to, you have to draw a line somewhere. And I, I think, you know, we could look at the break even point on the community center and if the break even point to have the pickleball people there is, call it fifty dollars. Then you charge them fifty dollars for the whole day and they could have as many groups in there as they want for the whole day and keep whatever money is left, and if they charge them fifteen dollars a person, you know, it's... But I think we need to base it on some kind of reality, that's...
Right, right now, the participants are paying twenty dollars a month.
Per month.
Per month.
The whole month.
And Rec is paying fifteen dollars per day, so it was twenty, no, it was twenty, twenty. But is it, is it possible, yeah, is it possible for them to raise it and what I, what I could drop to anymore? Five or ten per, and then that helps.
Yeah, I think there, there should be some participation. Yeah. Are we going to, is that some, is this something we can resolve tonight, or can you come back with, with, uh, I don't know how you figure out a cost per square foot.
Are they going to have an answer come this next meeting on if their members will go with the increased rate?
Um, not that I would worry. I don't, I don't know that, I, I think that was just something that they would consider, I don't know that it was something they would...
Twenty dollars a month, that's, that's, that's not anything.
But we were going to get all the costs.
They didn't, they didn't steal them away from the Y, because the Y was charging forty, and they thought, "How can we get people back?"
Yeah, because they, they stopped the program for a while, the Y started off at forty.
Yeah, but we were, for the next meeting, we were going to, am I correct, or maybe I'm not correct? We were going to find out the cost factors and present that, right?
For, for the outdoor, for the outdoor pickleball, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think that would be, that would be where they could make some money.
Yeah.
Because I wouldn't, I, I think... Yeah, I think we leave it the way it is right now, the way it was supposed to have been, the fifteen dollars.
And really, so I just learned this at the beginning, I mean, you said that fifteen is actually half of what the normal hourly rate is, correct?
Right, they get a discount.
The hourly rate. And they're getting it for, what, two hours? They're there for two hours?
Eight to ten, eight to eleven.
Yeah, it's like three hours, yeah.
Okay, so you're already getting half off, plus extra something.
Right.
Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and that was created, I remember when that was created, that was given to them because they're Rec and we wanted to do, you know, do something, it wasn't even under my, I wasn't on council then, but that's, it was changed to fifteen dollars per use to give them a break.
Okay, we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, just leave it the way it is for now and then...
And we'll let them know.
And then we'll, but tell them we're still talking, you know, we're still talking, you know, we're going to be talking about outdoor.
I think they need to raise their participant.
Yeah.
I, I think they, I'm...
Yeah, they're talking, they talked about that at the last meeting, the potential of having to do that. You think they're discussing whether they're twenty-five or thirty.
Yeah.
There's a reason why it's at forty, because they're not going to want it.
Right, yeah.
Okay, um, and the last thing, this is not, uh, related to the maps that we have here, but there, this goes back many years. Um, a lot of drawings are floating around on Facebook, there was even a conceptual drawing out here at the front door. Um, and they are just that conceptual drawings, and I think that this is a, as, I won't say point of reference, but just for everybody's knowledge, that nothing is, is finalized until it's voted on and improved and everything. Um, so I know there's, you're fighting an uphill battle, everybody keeps talking about phase two, but there never was a, an official phase two for the park.
Didn't, I thought, didn't the previous council vote?
I think that was all just talk.
To do one, two, and three? As the money came in?
I don't know how they...
There's no record, there's no bids, there's no, I mean, what do you approve? Dennis, do you remember anything?
No, but I mean, the, the hurdle always seemed to be, yeah, uh, the, the Borough Council will sort of bag you up on this, but the Rec Council's got to try to raise some money on this, if the state doesn't come up with money. Two hundred and fifty thousand of them, uh, came from the state for the park improvements that were done now, but, you know, you can't count on the state coming up with a big check all the time, so, yeah, I, I don't know that they, the Borough had any particular heartburn, but I guess the Borough Council wasn't real serious because there wasn't any money to do anything. You know, if they raised money to do something, okay, now we've got something to talk about, but until they're just, you know...
Again, not, not, not to slap anyone in the face or anything, but we, you know, at that time, going back through the notes, Borough Council approved two hundred and fifty K. Two hundred and fifty K was supposed to come from Rec and a grant, uh, which it did, in time you got a, a grant for, I think, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But the money spent on it was like one point two mil.
Yeah, it was way beyond...
I mean, it was like over, over double what was budgeted. Now, there were reasons for that, I understand, you know, the, the water issues and some of the things that had have been done, but to, you know, it's going to have to be bid and, I mean, to get my vote, anyway, if I'm still on council when they decide, they're going to have to figure out what's this going to cost and it's going to have to be a fairly bounded parameters on what we're building.
Yeah, it needs to be ringed and all that, to, to, to repeat.
Yeah, I, we just can't.
Yeah.
And we're going, you know, we're spending money on a water tower, we're spending, you know, we're little things like the pickleball courts, we could probably do this year.
Yeah, yeah, and there was, uh, the item from the, the report earlier about the, um, the Rec funds that came in from the twenty additional units. Um, you know, so maybe some of that, maybe that's an option, um, but those are things that we can sit down and look at later.
Yeah. Okay.
Susquehanna Centennial.
Am I saying it right?
Yes, you do. Yeah, the, there was, not much has changed so far, but one of the, one of the people on the committee with me is Ken Schaefer out there in the, in the, in the audience there, and we're, we're trying to all come up with a date for a parade for this, so we're working on things like that, trying to make some decisions, so until we actually do that, I can't, can't say much. I made that one short.
Okay. And you have people together that's on this committee?
Yeah.
And when is your meeting, or you're having, when is your next meeting?
That's what we're trying to get set now, because I had to change, because originally Donna Peace was going to be working with me, but she's had some problems, she's, has to have knee replacements, so she won't be able to do much. So I'm going, I'm in the process of trying to find someone to take her place.
So have you met at all with your people yet?
Not all at one time.
Okay, and so since she's out, who's on your committee for this?
I was going to say, it's Ken.
Ken Schaefer.
Myra Gillis.
Myra.
And then I had, I had, of course, I had her, and I was going to add, uh, I was also going to talk to the, uh, Rec Council and I'm going to talk to the Heritage Council myself to try to get people to do different things.
Sure.
But they're not going to be at the regular meetings unless they really want to. Yep.
Yeah, his wife.
So Ken, Myra, and?
Denise.
Denise, those are the three.
And Len.
Oh, I was reading, sorry, and, and Len, Ed Duce.
Across the street, Ken?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm trying to get as many groups involved because I'd, I'd like, it'd be nice to see everybody get a chance to put a little bit into it and do different things, because, uh, I think that, that makes a much better program when you have people that do different things, because, uh, I, the one thing that I've been thinking about that just crossed my mind just a couple of days ago is the fact that I was looking at trying to put things together all like in a week's span, sort of like we did for the Centennial. But I think the way people, things are going nowadays, I think we'd be better off probably having different, different things at different times, you know, so people can...
Over a week, or?
Yeah, just, just have like...
Different times.
Yeah, because I, I also would like to get Summit Grove involved, because they've been here a long time.
You said you were going to get NCR involved, too?
Yeah, and, and the railroad, yeah.
You said that before, but not tonight.
And this is next year happening?
Yes, and...
What month next year?
That's what we're trying to get, the, the parade and everything, we're trying to, we're going to get together and we have to get a date picked out, so...
What's the official date, there is an official date?
I'll have to check and see what it is.
Well, was it August? I thought that was it, when I, I was actually...
Do you remember the, the day?
I don't even remember the exact date, but I know it was August.
It was, it was full week.
Yeah, yeah.
Full week, uh, it was like the second week of August is when it did.
Yeah. First or second week of August.
Yes.
Remember what you do. Now, I forget.
I can add in, just for the IGC committee, I went to, um, uh, Stewartstown this week. Ken couldn't make it that evening, he had car trouble, but.
Yeah, the car died.
I'm gonna get Kim and go around, I went to Shrewsbury, but he wasn't there either, but, um, I went around to reintroduce the IGC, being we've had a lecture, there's new people, passing out the business card again, kind of reintroducing ourselves, so we did that at, um, Stewartstown, and so hopefully, Kim and I, maybe we could do it this Wednesday at Glen Rock, they have some new people, um.
Yeah, we did.
Kind of re, re-go around.
Re- rekindle, yeah.
Yep.
Uh, review of ordinance establishing residential parking permits. I, I think, we, we had an offer from NCR that they would actually pay for signs to put up along South Front Street, directing people to the municipal lot. I think, I think that we, maybe should split it with them, but I think, you know, that, that would probably be a better way to go than trying to establish residential parking zones. If we could do that, it should be relatively low cost, and we could see if it has an impact. So, if you wanna contact them or anything.
Okay.
What would they actually put on the sign? Could they put residential parking?
Yeah, railroad parking, yeah, Marge Goodfellow turned left on High Street.
Thank you.
The municipal parking lot, or something like that.
Yeah.
Do they direct them out on their website when like they're purchasing tickets and so forth?
Well, they said that they would do that too.
Okay.
So, you know, if there's, there's some soft things that they could do, like put it on the ticket, put it on the website, and then put the signs out, I think it might have an impact, although people are still probably gonna park where it first spot they.
I think that the website would be the most people would drive, and make sure it's on there.
Yeah.
Is that even, moving up from the agenda then?
Yeah, they could remove it from the agenda, I think.
Well, can we leave it there to know what happens?
Well, we could put NCR parking signs on the next month's agenda, get an update on that.
Okay.
Okay, now we're up to code enforcement policy and procedures. Everyone tried it once. I mean, we obviously have, you know, actually, we, you know, the, the Dickinson parking restrictions previously tabled is part of the code enforcement policy. We, I mean, we, we basically have a serious issue, because one would hope that people who, let's take the parking on Dickinson as an example. You know, somebody has a box truck, and they park it here. You would think that the logical thing to do would be, if I bring my pickup truck home at night, I would park down the street a little bit, so that the trash truck and the school buses can get through, but that's not what's happening. And the same thing, if the box truck arrives second, park down a little ways, or up a little ways, so that, you know.
Um, and every house there has a driveway.
Well, but they're all used, that's the problem, I mean, if you, you know, I went, I went through, I went through the borough, and certainly did not hit all the streets, but I found at least thirty violations. You know, your neighbor has a car parked underneath his bush, uh, there's a car with a license plate from Colorado, it expired in nineteen oh two at the end of the alley, but there's, um, I exaggerated, but, um, you know, they, they, on Dickinson, there's a guy parked, and he's got two cars parked in his yard. There's a guy with, on Dickinson with a trailer parked in his front yard, in the right, what we would call the right-of-way for snowplowing. I don't even know how you don't hit it whenever you plow.
Why don't we just do, we did a, well, somebody did a, he's, West High Street, it's closed the street off for any parking. You can't park on West High Street.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I never even, I guess I.
There's very prominent signs there.
Yeah, I guess I did know that.
So I mean, if we can do it there, and there, and there's a lot of traffic there, I don't know why we couldn't do it on Dickinson Court.
Just close one side, you mean?
The whole street is, is closed on West High Street, nobody can park on either side. So there's a precedent in, in the borough.
Well, you have to have a traffic study support that.
Okay, but there, there's a subject.
They have spoken, who owns the box truck and who owns the truck?
Well, I think that's the next step. I think, you know, in fact, I said that to Andy.
Last month when we talked about.
I said that to Andy today, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Well, with, with the box truck, yeah.
Yes.
Receptive to, is, is it, first, is it a violation for it to be on the street, height-wise?
On the street, no, in the driveway, yes.
The box truck?
The white.
No, the, the large.
The large.
I'm talking the white truck in the road.
Yeah, no, that's not a violation.
It's not eight feet.
Well, but that only applies if it's in the driveway, if it's on the road.
It can be twelve feet high on the road?
Track to trail, I mean, it's just, if it's a validly licensed and, and.
Is it commercial use, though? Is it registered as commercial or residential?
It doesn't matter.
That doesn't matter?
No. Under the moving, under the motor vehicle code, if you have a car or vehicle, it can be on the street, it can be on the street.
But it's, but it's residential, it's in a residential street.
If it's parked there, if they're not using it for commercial purposes, it's not commerc, I mean, if it's not a commercial business, it's parking their truck there to operate in business, the house, it's probably not commercial.
See, that's even effy.
It's not marked, this, this vehicle's not marked.
It's not, it's not.
But, but it's, it's not, if, so if someone drives their truck home, okay, and parks it in front of their home, and they're living there, and they take it back and forth to work, that's not a commercial use. So that's really kind of what they're doing, unless you know they're operating the business out of the house, it doesn't violate your zoning laws. And that's traditionally the way it's handled.
This is, who owns the box truck? In the road, the white one?
Same guys with the big, uh.
That has the motorcycles and everything, so you don't think that's being used for a business?
I believe that's, from my understanding, that's a hobby. He's just.
Well, that guy would be a lot bigger, I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah. He would say there's a, probably a fine line, like.
Yeah.
He's on to you right now.
Yeah. So if you wanna cite, just.
Let's make money.
Let's walk back, though. Well, if you win the prize, but I mean. If you win, um, you know, I don't know, it's really, I'm sorry.
I'd say, keep in mind, the way you enforce the zoning ordinance is to file a citation with, you have to file a notice. They have the right to take that notice to the zoning hearing board, prove their case or not prove their case. Or they can ignore that, and we have to take them to the district justice, and then we have to prove by a preponderance of the evidence, which is basically greater than half, okay? That they're operating a commercial operation in accordance with zoning laws. That's, that's what we have to prove. So the question is, is on what basis would we test, what would we testify to, what would our evidence be from the borough side to establish that this person is operating a commercial operation?
And that's what we're gonna have to do, and.
And that's what we have to do.
With your, with your guy with the garage, and, you know, we're gonna have to prove that they've got, you know, so we're gonna have to.
Yeah, give that a draw. What was that receptiveness when you contacted them about the white truck, box truck in the road? Is it?
The letter that we sent and that initiated the conversation was about the, a larger vehicle in the driveway, which is now gone because, away, yeah.
So you haven't had the conversation with the white vehicle, box truck in the road?
We have not, no. Because at the point, it didn't violate it.
Well, it's legal, but to have a conversation, you know, we're having issues because you guys are parking straight across from each other. Do you think you could angle it, I mean, that, that sort of conversation?
That conversation.
That's what I'm talking about.
Cause I, and there really is no problem, I just wanna verify. If I go knock on somebody's door and I say, hi, I'm Andy Bobby, I'm Borough Council President, and I'd like to talk to you about this situation, you know, that's okay to do, right?
It, it is as long as Borough Council directs you to do that.
Yeah.
Well, it's like, we don't, I, I personally don't want to take.
I, I mean, the question is, is do you want individual borough council members going out and talking to different people?
It just seems like it's such a common sense thing, that if you just spoke to somebody and said.
I always, look, I'm a big fan of that, people will come in and go, my neighbor's doing this. I'll, my first question is, did you ever talk to your neighbor about what they're doing? So I, I think that's a very fair way to handle it, is knock on the door and say, hey, these are the issues we're having because of the way you're parking, and, and see where the conversation.
I don't have to take action, I don't really have to have to take action. I would rather talk to the homeowner first and say, look, if, if you can do this, then we won't have to do this. We don't wanna do this, but if you keep doing this, we're gonna have to do something over here.
That's, that's what I, that's basically what I wanna say. But I, I almost guarantee you that the, the question is, that, you know, what's gonna come back is, well, he parked, I don't like him parking out there, so I parked right across from him.
Right.
You know, and that's where the problem is.
The guy with the box truck, he's been here, he was more than cooperative, if people, if you want to come back, we could, we could talk to him as a group, and he, and I think he'd take care of things. I mean.
Yeah.
There was, there was, there were a bunch of moving parts for that whole thing, but he was, he was more than cooperative.
I mean, we're, we're just speaking of one specific example, but, I mean, there, you know, and it was, I only brought it up because it's, it's Dickinson's the next thing on the agenda, but there's, there's lots of, lots of common sense things that need to be done.
Cause there's no problem if he parks the big truck here and the box truck down farther, the garbage truck can get by. If they park like you were saying, the big truck here, the box truck across from it, you can't get through without hitting them.
The big truck can't be parked on the street.
It hasn't.
Not already, lots of times.
Right. That was the problem. So he knows that he can't park on the street. Is that, are we saying that?
With the box truck?
Not the box truck, with a big truck.
Big truck, he knows he can't park that on the street.
Why can't he?
Cause Andy just said he knows he can't.
I thought he could.
But he doesn't.
He can't park, he can park on the street.
He can't park in the driveway.
See, that's where the problem is, when he parks on the street, the box truck right across from it, you can't get your garbage trucks or your snowplows through.
You're confused, the black truck is the neighbor across the street.
Oh, um.
The black truck is across the street, he has a big truck.
I've seen the box truck on one side and the big truck on the other side.
A big black truck, the, the neighbor across the street is.
It's like a Ram, Ram truck.
And what they, what they do is they park right next to, I mean, across from each other, where they should park this way, not right next to.
Right.
Yeah, but they're, they're not gonna wanna park in front of somebody else's house.
Exactly.
Right, yeah, and the people aren't probably gonna wanna to park.
Yeah, they're supposed to be hit with.
If they're straight across from each other, and this one parks at this edge of his property, this one over here, I mean, if they just.
Yeah.
Offset it, I mean, it's not, it's not rock aside people, it's clients.
I thought you were talking about the, his touring truck, I didn't realize you were talking about across the street.
Yeah, I've, yeah, I've seen that one on his side of the street, and then the big white box truck right opposite, and you can't get anything through, I couldn't get my, my Lincoln.
I would imagine that if you parked that touring truck on the street and the box truck on the street, I couldn't fit down.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I think the way to approach it is, is to say, look, we've received some complaints from the garbage truck, and some concerns from the fire department, the school, that they're having difficulty getting through there, and they don't wanna hit your truck, and now someone hit, hurt their vehicle, and see where it goes, I mean, that, I think that's what you're saying.
They already have, yeah.
Right.
But you have to give it to both people, right?
Right, I mean, you would talk to them, yeah, oh, yeah, but again, if we had everyone do what they're supposed to do, you wouldn't need me. You just go talk to people who do what they want.
So you just have, you just have Wade go out and do it?
Well, if, if council so directs, I would go, I would go talk to, to people, yeah.
Well, why don't we have Wade do it?
Yeah.
It gets a little more formal when you have your zoning officer going out and doing it.
Okay.
I mean, that's just the perspective. It's like when you send a lawyer.
That's better from Andy going out.
I mean, I don't have a problem with you going out, but why put yourself in that situation when Wade does that anyway?
Exactly.
Well. Cause I think it's a more threat, I think it's more of a threatening environment if you send Wade out. I'll take Brunel with me.
Brunel, get you done?
Well, you're gonna be talking to one guy that came to the Borough Council, he's not gonna give you any trouble at all.
No.
I don't know the other guy.
He seemed decent.
Yeah.
But we are, right now, talking about one specific instance, and this, this goes way deeper, I mean, there's so many.
There's so many.
I mean, well, your, your two, um. There are.
There really are, and you can't just really, you know, drive around. See, I feel, you know, we're not Russia, we're the United States of America, we got freedom, we got, you know, all kinds of things like this. I feel that I, as a citizen, I'm honest now, it's none of my business, it's the person's house and everything like that. But I think there should be some sort of committee or something from the borough officials that go knock on the door very nicely and have a piece of paper explaining as to why, and let them handle it.
Well, that's what Candy does with the letters.
See, that's what I'm saying, that's a good thing, to do it that way, you know, because I really don't want anybody, you know, on their, um, come and do not knocking on my door. And a lot of people feel that way.
I mean, isn't that your discussion as to what kind of policy you would take overall?
So it should be, it should be real involved, it should be something that somebody can understand and can work with and get it done. I feel, let's see, I've been on here about two, two years, I guess, I feel we need to get these things done, and what's hindering us from getting some of these things done is all this paperwork, and all these, you know, these rules and regulations, and it takes forever and everything, and it just goes on and on and on.
Well, it's called due process.
I know, well, it's not.
It is unfortunate, but you know, the one that, you know, the one that's, let's, let's take a hypothetical situation, where someone's got multiple cars parked around their house and in their backyard. You know, if they're all licensed, how do I get rid of them?
Yeah.
You know, you can't.
That's what I mean.
Legally, there's nothing you can do, so.
Well, technically, you can say they can't park in their front yard, I mean.
Maybe they have a junkyard, are they running a junkyard? Why do they have so many cars? I mean, what's going on? Nuisance? But didn't you adopt the Property Maintenance Code this last year?
Yeah, you're not allowed to park on your.
Yeah.
On the grass.
And then I believe you had a committee for that that was going to report back in one year, to see how it was going.
Well, it, well, we saw a given year.
Coming up to the one, coming up to the one-year arc of adoption.
That's a good thing.
Well, you can have it.
It's just, you know, just, because then they'll say, well, over here in the next street, such and such, you know? It just goes on and on and on, and I said nothing.
How far is council willing to go? If you, if you send out a hundred letters and file a hundred citations, is Andy gonna have to go to court a hundred times?
They got, across the street, by the way, they've gotten, I, I forgot, I, I forgot to tell you that, so they've gotten some sort of notice, because several times I see a, a pink letter, piece of paper like that taped to their front door, and they come and they pick it up and it goes in.
It's water shut off, or it could be.
I don't know what that would be, but I see.
It could be an eviction.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we cite them, they can come down here and pay it, they don't have to go to the district magistrate.
But if they don't, that's why I'm asking, how far is council willing to go?
They're pulling up and.
If you have a hundred people that don't pay it, is Andy going to court a hundred times to go before the magistrate?
That's what I mean, it's tying him up, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Unfortunately, I think you have to do that until word gets out, it's just like the kids skateboarding on the tennis courts. Once the word got out, it stopped.
Andy, do you have that much time to go to court a hundred times a month?
I don't think we've ever given out that many citations.
But if you're gonna start doing it, why, why would you cite one person and not the next person?
And that's the difficulty, if you, if you, you, it's either one, it's either reactive or just look for all of them.
Okay, then you, Andrew.
Okay, and you go, go out.
Andrew and I talked at one time, what you did in Spring Grove, you had a ticketing system.
Yeah.
You adopted the ticketing system, and you went out, you ticketed, they had so many days to come in and pay the ticket, you had it pre-printed, this is for this parking violation, this violation, that violation, and they came in and they paid it here.
But those are, some of those are different ordinances, I mean, they were shoveling your sidewalk after it's next.
Oh, parking the wrong direction.
Yes, those sorts of things, but I, I think you're talking more about, I think you're talking more about nuisance ordinances and.
Yeah, I mean, I, anything, just so we see something.
Why, why do you have them if you're not gonna enforce them? Let's get rid of them, if everybody's gonna get to live how they want to live, your freedom's gonna go in a tank.
Here, here's the exact, the exact.
Here, here's the exact, the exact problem is, is that I have my whole backyard filled with junk. And Andy sends me a letter and says, "You gotta get rid of the junk." A normal person would make some effort at getting rid of stuff.
Yeah.
But some people don't.
They don't care.
They just don't care.
That's not your problem.
That's why you gotta hit them in the pocket. They care.
That's not your problem if they don't get rid of it. I mean, that's, you can't, you can't run the borough on what they're gonna do. You, you have a property maintenance code.
Well, how many times have you sent him a letter and we still have him pictures that haven't changed yet?
Just ignore it, right?
Well, then I think somebody hasn't been doing their job with enforcing the current codes and ordinances and zoning and whatever it is, that the ball's been being dropped.
And he's the exception rather than the rule, I think.
Open-ended, you know, get this done. And, you know, four months later, we're still talking about it. If, you know,
Yeah, it just goes on and on.
If they give a notice, whatever the, whatever the...
I think we got, we got a court.
Ordinance says, that's their time limit. If something extraordinary happens, can I have another month? Okay, you know, maybe another two weeks, something. But, you know, you say you saw thirty. Do you want ninety around the, the borough, a hundred, I mean?
So are we talking about Washington and the problem up there?
We got it.
Borough why?
No, I'm just talking, that's, that's an example.
I don't know, I don't know what he's talking. You'd have to ask him what he's talking about.
But in other words, can't, can't we ask these people to appear before us? And then if they, you can't do that.
No, we have, we have a queue board.
That you can...
Okay. We got it.
What do you need from us?
We, all we need, and this goes back to, I think I said this a couple of times tonight, we need direction on council. And whatever council's direction is, that's what this office will do.
Right.
And if the direction is to be proactive, then we will go out, we will send letters. And for every violation that we see under the Property Maintenance Code or nuisance ordinance or zoning violation, and we will handle that.
I thought we did this last meeting.
During the session.
That's why we, that's why we came up, yeah. If that's a direction, that's what we will do. But we need guidance and, and what the policy needs to be from, from this council on what we're supposed to do, because it's mixed. And I think we're just looking for a clear...
Well, we have our solicitor.
But, well, we, that's not up to, that's not up to Solicitor Jones to decide.
You guys have to tell borough counts, borough staff, how you want them to enforce ordinances, whether proactively and aggressively or reactive and...
You don't have to be aggressive about it. I'm not, I'm not looking for aggressiveness. I'm looking for compliance.
So I mean, they just have to do something.
Yeah, it means, do you go out and look for ordinance?
On Dickinson, where people have a couple of cars parked in their backyard. Do you cite them?
Give them a warning. If, if you, if you, if this is a property where, where it doesn't have a history, give them a warning.
You do. You get, you get twenty, at minimum, you get twenty days to comply.
Okay, you give them, you give them a warning. If they comply, great. If they thumb their nose at you and say, "No, I'm gonna keep parking on my grass. I'm gonna leave eight, you know, totes, you know, twenty five totes by living in the front yard," I, you know, then it has to be taken up to the next step.
That could not be appealed board, then. They can go to the appeal board if they don't agree.
They, that...
That's the question. You're gonna take all hundred violations to the next step?
Well, maybe those hundred residents are getting sick and tired of living next door to it. And if you live next door to it, maybe you wish that somebody would take care of it, that you have a council here to do it.
I mean, does just someone have one car? Do they get the same action as somebody who has ten cars?
For what? Do you park in the grass? Do you park on the side of the house?
No, each one's a separate violation, correct?
I, I think her point is, is you go after the people that just have one car or if they have a dozen. And what level severity of violation? If the answer is, is you want to prosecute, pursue, however, however you do it, with a warning, and typically you don't give a warning, you give a violation letter. Because if we only give a warning, then we have to give the violation letter anyway.
Right, right.
So that's really the process you go through. And then if you give, if, if your direction to borough staff is, give them the appropriate period of time as set forth in the ordinance, if they don't meet that, take them to district justice. And that's the DJ. That's, I think that's what they're looking for. They're looking for what the stat, you know, if, if that's, if you want them to enforce the ordinance to the T, you should tell them that. If you wanna let them work with people, you should tell them that.
Well, I think where, where everyone, everyone is hung up on the, the words that you used, which were severity of the violation. That's the problem. You know, if I, if I, if I park my car in the backyard, cause I'm doing something, I don't know, I'm working in the garage or whatever, I don't want a ticket. You know, if I, if I, you know, I mean, there are, you know, that's, that's the problem. I think that's what Inga is getting to too, is that, you know, she certainly doesn't want people dumping oil into, into the water table, but by the same token, she doesn't want people looking over her shoulder telling her what you have to do.
I think this comes down to common sense also.
Well, there you go, cause that's what I keep saying. It is common sense.
Well, because, no, I don't, we don't park our cars on our lawn, but maybe I need to take a load of saw down to the back of my property and I drive the truck down there to do that. The truck's not gonna be left there. I don't think you should be giving out a violation for that because the truck's gonna come right back out and go back on the driveway, you know? But if you, I'm more talking about the repetitiveness, the repetitiveness where you keep giving the calls from the citizens that this is going on, this is going on, and nothing ever changes. And there's stuff in the ordinance that could change it. And it's no relief. Everybody should live in New Freedom and be happy.
So New Freedom Borough Council, we go and come up with a police council? They got a police?
Why do you keep going, this actually, the, just, just off the, off the end of that?
I'm just wondering where you're going here.
I, I think I was pretty clear in saying that they don't have to go full force and penalize everybody. You know, give, give a warning. If it's, if it's something, you know, whatever it is.
But that's what I'm saying. So you're gonna police everyone's lawn and everybody's driveway and everybody's home?
Well, I believe that there's gonna be something going on the website where people could, uh, submit a complaint via the website. So if there's a complaint submitted, go out and take a look at it. Maybe once a week, they drive the borough. Why not?
Good to know that. I mean, now I'm gonna live in a police community.
Wait a minute. A year ago, they came around and told all these citizens to trim back their bushes and they were gonna do it for a hundred and fifty dollars.
I got one of those.
She was one of them. That was crazy. That was over the top. That was not Washington Street where this guy parks twelve cars on his lawn.
But they were violating, but they were violating.
Yes, they were. She's talking about a police state. They were doing trees.
And I didn't get my pants in a tizzy over it. I got ladder out and with my husband, I trimmed back the tree.
Yes.
Done.
Turned it on my neighbors.
And I'm sure, Erica, that not, a lot of people won't use the common sense that you did.
But that's not my problem.
But then Andrew is going to be spending valuable time policing.
We have another, we have another zoning officer that's, you know, every time I turn around, he's in here answering the phone. He could go out one day a week and make a, make a circuit. He's got a, a borough truck. It doesn't take that long to, you know, where how many, how many grid miles.
I'm not asking for a police state. I take offense to you saying I'm asking for a police state. I'm, I'm really not.
That's okay. That's okay. You can take offense to me all your life.
I think Inga said the same thing, though. So you got someone on council saying the same thing.
I'm sorry?
Andy, I hate to do this, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a vacation I have to take. I gotta go.
Hmm?
Okay.
I mean, I'm fine, but I just...
You need somebody in your...
No, uh, Marshall. But I'm back full time. It's just that I have to take, I have to take this medicine that I've forgotten. And the doctor called me.
Not a problem.
I just think, I think you need to give direction as to how, do you want them to respond only to complaints? Or do you want them to find or look for violations and cite, give them warnings or the violation letter? I think that's what they're, that's all they're looking for.
Yeah, I understand.
Is to tell whether they should respond to complaints or whether they should seek out vi, or, or look for violations.
Okay, I, I think, I think first of all, and I, I, let me, I, I, we gotta try to close this out. I think we should respond to complaints. But I also...
From citizens, you're saying? You respond from citizens?
We should respond to complaints from citizens. And I think that we, once they're investigated and we issue the warning, I think we should then proceed to the fullest degree that we can, if it's a valid complaint. So the one we're talking about that Inga wants to mention, that one, you know, I don't understand, like, that one, it seems like we shouldn't prosecute that one already. And I'm sure there's reasons not and... The problem is, is people keep moving trash from this side to that side and then they have to restart ordinance. But that's what I think we should do. If it's a valid complaint under the ordinance that we've passed, then I think we should go through the process and prosecute and get it taken care of. That's...
That's reactive.
That's reactive. I don't think we should wander around looking for him's neighbor's car under a bush or we, or, you know, I, I, I think that things like the, um, issue on Dickinson, that's, you know, that is a problem. That should be addressed in some way, shape or form. And I think it should be addressed to the fullest extent that we can address it. Cause it's, obviously, it's a safety issue. Kids could run out between. Buses are, you know, can't make it through. The trash truck can't make it through. That needs addressed. So that's what I'm gonna suggest. Respond to complaints from citizens, investigate, warn, and then prosecute.
I think, I think you almost have to do that, because if you send somebody out, whether it's Wade or, excuse me, Wade or anybody else driving around the borough, they're gonna see everything. You can't get on somebody's property.
Yeah, you're on the lawn.
If you wanna look in the back, you'd see from a distance, "Yeah, it looks like there's something going on back there." You can't get on there. So, all right, so now we just say, "All right, well, we're only gonna go drive, drive down the road, wherever we can see, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll take action on, if you see everything." But if there's something going on in the backyard, you can see from a distance, there might be something there, but unless I can get access to the backyard, they, they can't do, they can go...
If the neighbor gives them access, they can.
Right, or if the, if the property does, or you go to magistrate to get a what? You get a, a warrant or something, right? For somebody to go on the property that you're probably not gonna get.
You're probably not gonna get that. And the problem is, is as, as Dave said, you, you have to prove by a preponderance of the evidence. And so we're, I, but I think this would be a good start at direction. I don't necessarily think that we should drive through the borough. Cause if you drive through the borough, you're gonna see a lot of stuff that you could take it. And I don't, I don't think I wanna tell a guy that, you know, those two cars you got parked next to your shed that are off your driveway, you gotta get rid of them or move them or whatever. I don't wanna do that. Now, if a neighbor calls and complains, then yes, it's a violation of the ordinance. Then we can go ahead and, and address it. But I don't wanna be overly proactive in this, in this situation. And if I'm wrong, you guys will tell me because you'll vote something different. So that's, that would be my motion, to respond to complaints from citizens, investigate the complaint, warn them, and then prosecute to the fullest extent of the ordinance. Because it doesn't make any sense to have an ordinance if we're not gonna use it.
And see how it, see how it goes. If you make some headway that way, fine. If you end up by, by playing a game where somebody's got vehicle or something else, they move it someplace else, now you're gonna start all over again, right? They've just said, "No, that wasn't a bad start." Start all over again. You're gonna be running around in a circle. There are, there are people that seem to make a living out of playing games like that, you know?
I just say, there's some people that'll do nothing but try to figure out how to get around.
Yeah.
Just know when they're on.
Yeah.
Or moving their car.
Yeah.
It, I've seen it, trust me. It, it's amazing to do what likes people.
Just stick to complaints for now. You'll probably get your hands on doing that.
So I would entertain a motion to that effect. Does that give you what you need then?
It's really gonna change.
So that's...
It's changing.
Well... Can we?
I have a six o'clock appointment to get my neurostimulator redone. I've gotta leave.
Okay.
Would you please turn the camera off when this is finished?
I think you can direct borough staff to address a specific situation in accordance with the ordinance, if that's what you wanna do.
Well, I, I have a question. I mean, where are we in the process on the complaint number, whatever it is?
Yeah, I don't, there's nothing to these nerves.
Where are we?
Oh, is...
I mean, I know you've, I know you've talked to all...
Any ordinance? I'm sorry. The...
Cars are all registered.
Well, that's not one of them. Uh, for the first one, we'll say, uh, it's picture number eight. That one, uh, he was given thirty days. Uh, picture number nine, that's a zoning violation that had to be for five days. Picture number ten, that is a property maintenance violation that was thirty days.
Okay, so we're coming up on the twenty-fifth and then, and then we, and then we take it to the next step?
Yeah, at that point, then we...
Does anybody here think that we should be proactive to the point where we're gonna go and start citing people driving around looking for violations?
Why don't we just let them do with their job right now?
That, I, I would...
Cause what, what I didn't realize before five minutes ago, with the time clicked down on it.
Right. I should've won, but I realized.
It was so close. How can we do this?
Really, that's, that's all we know.
Oh, right.
Absolutely. To the fullest extent of the ordinance. Well, he's got deadlines, yeah.
Through.
Yeah. I'm, I'm happy with that. Everybody else is. Everybody happy?
I'm a little bit, oh, we're not done yet?
We're close. There's just one, really one more thing that we really should. We already kinda discussed Mardi Gras improvements, right? Or do you wanna talk about the sketchwork?
A little bit more detail.
Yeah, I mean, you know, this, the, these sketches that were provided, and they're, they're just concepts. They're just sketches. They're just ideas. These were provided after we discussed, um, a couple of months ago, you know, ADA accessibility around the bandstand and the existing buildings. So these are just, uh, you know, examples of things that could be done. They, the first one basically looks at, okay, do you wanna put in a, a asphalt driveway? Put in a loading area for a new building? Put in ADA accessible parking spaces? Remove some of the other buildings and, and build a new building that has multiple purpose. Being, you know, maybe an open air pavilion, a concession area, putting in the bathrooms again, um, and just overall site improvements. And the, the different sketches just have different ideas behind them. Different locations of buildings, layout of the driveway. The third probably being the, uh, least intrusive at this point. Um, but kinda just putting a Band-Aid on, on the existing access to the building, buildings.
So for that ADA where there was all the gravel, is, is that getting replaced with anything? It just, it looks like it's just still on, on there.
Well, basically, you would provide, uh, ask, like, in number one, you would provide that parking area. They'd be able to get into the new building and then they'd be able to have a accessible ceiling.
Yeah, okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, goes the whole way, yeah. I got you. And, you know...
Yeah, that's not a bad thing to have the accessible ceiling, right?
This is where I kinda mentioned earlier, if we, if we decide to look at something like this, we have a year to really find out what fits the best down there. And you could even tie that into, if you didn't move forward with the pickleball, uh, to put pickleball courts at the lower end, do these ADA improvements. Maybe do, um, some kinda other improvement in the park and pull that package together and have a strong application to DCNR. You could also pair that with DCD funding. My understanding, commissioners still have, um, my bedtime reminder, just... Uh, commissioners still have Marcella Shale money. Um, there's other funding sources out there that you could pair up and really reduce the capital out thing for New Freedom Borough. And in this piece, the record... And in this piece, the recreation commission of their having a match. So if we use the next, we'll say, year to really develop a plan and call that phase two, I, I think that's the best thing. And.
I'm in favor of that.
I, I know that there's some heartache there with the buildings and things, but, you know, I think a new building that's fully compliant still is, has the ability to do everything that's being done now. Probably makes.
I know one thing, Andrew, that there are people that when they start to hear they're going to take those buildings away, some of them, I'm already hearing things like that. People are talking, but you're not planning on taking anything else down, are you? So I, I think that'll be a.
Whatever, whatever would come down, I would hope would be, or at least in my mind, would be replaced with something as far as square footage that would be equivalent or greater to.
Well, that's what the first drawing is basically.
Yeah.
You get the proposed concession building.
Were new roofs just put on those existing buildings?
The block buildings, yes.
Well. The white ones, the four white ones here?
Uh, not the big ones, to the, to the far right.
Just the three to the left?
Yes.
New groups? When did those get new rooms? How long would you say?
I would give us a couple, two or three years.
Two years?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, that's.
At a cost of?
I would have to, who is, I don't have a.
Could, could this be just solved with something as simple as removing the stones that are there and putting something like crush and run?
That's what it is, huh?
Well, I thought it's fine, but.
No, it's not the.
We're still going to have the, the wheelchairs sinking in.
But I've heard that, what, that compacts down and gets hard like cement.
It can. We have to be, we have to be cognizant of stormwater issues then with that, of course. And, and we.
That does go through.
Not if you're, if you roll it in, pressure run will probably be improbable.
My place is concerned, I'm in progress.
Yeah. It creates a, it's a cheap, uh, very hassle.
It's actually what the municipal parking lot is, just crusher run. It's been driven over so many times and rolled in and looks like it's paved, but it's really not.
Has quarryed waste passed down? Man, that gets hard.
I know, I know, I know that the. Mayor probably wouldn't extend the same courtesy to me, but he has a lot of strong feelings about this and I think we should wait to talk.
And again, I don't, I know that there's some heartache, most of these are just sketch.
Right, yeah.
They're just ideas, you know, to try to improve the area, maybe to look at funding, you know, next year and, and make sure that that's the best fit. If not.
What percentage of a grant do you think you could be able to get? What percentage of this project do you think you could cover with these grants that you were talking?
Uh.
Half's always a good answer.
Yeah, well, right off of that, the DCNR, that's fifty percent. So they require fifty percent match. You are able to pair that with DCD funding and any other funding you have and also incoming donations. So I would say, yeah, the, the base would be half. We would go after more. And I don't really have to get into this too much, but the current round that ends April fourth or sixth, I believe that. We don't have enough time to get it ready for. Speaking with the local advisor, she indicated a lot of municipalities are planning on using their ARPA allocation as their match. And they think that this round will be probably one of the most competitive rounds because of that, so.
You could use ARPA for a match? First ten million, yeah. I didn't know that.
Yeah, so it's probably better than meet till next year anyway.
The other thing is the state's opening up the, the LSA grants from the gambling line, so you could use that as match money too.
A lot of opportunities. And we would be aggressive and keep going after that. So fifty percent save base.
Talking in conjunction with the REIT Council and kind of what their vision is too?
I think it needs to be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
I mean, this is just.
Yeah, this, I mean.
We'll just keep it on unfinished business and.
Yeah, but I mean, the trouble, I mean, if you look at the first drawing, you know, you're putting in the paving and the parking and the parking to watch the bandstand, but these buildings almost have to come down, right?
Yeah, they are.
Because, but they almost have to because of the ADA requirements, right? Because you can't get into those buildings. The pavilion you can, because you can build a ramp up to the pavilion area.
You can't widen the entryway?
You'd end up, well, you could.
They're block buildings, I mean, you could.
Yeah, but just.
You can saw cut them. You have to put in your.
Seal. Yeah, yeah, so it'd be.
But then everything in that building needs to be compliant too.
Yeah.
I'd like to know the amount of money that went into those three buildings. If they're going to talk about coming down, I'd like to know what went into them and what condition otherwise they're presently in.
Yeah, I know that there were, and I, I believe it was pretty far back, that there were repairs made to one of those because the entire wall was pushed out.
The roofs are eventually, they're pretty much, yeah. So we've been on the agenda for next one. Do you want to do this?
I, I, I mean, everybody has the proposal, I think you just take that.
Yeah, the council chair, well, talk about it just a second. The council chamber audio video improvements, basically what they would have is two screens on carts that you could turn any which way. So like if Burnell and I are sitting here in a sewage meeting and you need to address people, you could, you could turn that. Everything will be capable of being plugged into a computer so you could send stuff to the screen. It'll be plugged into HDMI so that, that it'll be a direct feed. It'll all be set up with Microsoft Team. It's expensive, it's thirty-eight K, but you get, you're going to have microphones in the ceiling, it'll pick everybody up. You could have that microphone on during public comment, shut it off whenever a public comment is over so that you don't hear everybody talking. It would, everything would be recorded, you could real time the meeting so that people could talk or ask questions during the meeting. What do you want?
So you're live streaming it then?
Huh?
We're live streaming then?
Could be live streaming, yeah.
That'd be great. I mean, it'd take care of our problem, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and it really sets the room up as a multipurpose room to be used for, you know, trainings and other meetings and things. And, you know, it kind of eliminates all the training, puts one central location, just kind of cleans everything up, gets a little bit more modern.
Are you sure they did this up if you look at the tax bill?
They did.
Yeah, they did. Yeah. It was helpful during the pandemic.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think it'd be helpful almost any time because you'd be able to, you know, number one, people could, could tune in. I mean, the population's getting older. As they get older, they can stay home and watch, and watch it if they want it and get more people involved. Maybe in rural business, someone might hear something on, you know, I think it's a lot, and I think it's, you know, while it's expensive, I think it's, it's a good move and it'll take us far into the future. So anyway, the bid is good until April, the end of April, so we need to vote on it, discuss and vote next meeting.
So just move, we put on, keep on the agenda for that, that meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we'll keep it on the agenda and discuss it next week.
Are they characteristic?
It is characteristic.
Yeah, it's characteristic, yeah. Anything else?
For what?
For new business? And businesses here?
Um, actually, we did, did we have it up for all the ordinance or we have none?
Yeah, we're, we're just finished, unfinished, so we'll go on with the new business.
Okay.
Have I got new business?
I have nothing.
I have a request and it, and I was going to bring this up tonight and then it got proven to be a very good example with the pickleball. A lot of committees come around, they get formed, they get forgotten about. Didn't remember. We had a pickleball committee from twenty twenty.
We actually tabled it. It was tabled.
Not in the minutes. I, not in the minutes that way, but we could get a list of the committees that we have.
Oh, sure.
That's what was in the director that I put out. That was the, my understanding of the committees that existed at that time, which was in that director that I put out last month.
This one?
The, yeah, yeah, and they're behind council. Under the council tab.
Staff and appointments, boards and commissions.
Behind the council tab. That's okay. So if, if there are ones here that obviously were, were missing, then, you know, I think this is probably the best place for them.
Did we miss any tonight?
No.
Well, I'm serious, I didn't know.
Yeah, I just kind of went down through it.
So it's personnel, public safety, infrastructure, EMS, business.
They don't all report, they're.
Suss.
Suss, Suss, they're. They practice hours.
You did.
We're no good.
But it just seemed like some of them get, kind of get lost.
Yeah, then the pickleball, I thought we tabled just because they didn't come up with the other money pool. That's, that's going to be the end.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we came up with a cost and we came, I mean, it was, it was closed down. I can't remember we formally closed it, but we took it off the agenda because they didn't come up with any money.
So are we saying these, these are the known committees right now?
Should be, yeah.
Okay. And then.
Is place on there? I didn't hear anyone say place.
EMS and fire.
Public safety.
Public safety.
We inspire EMS, civil preparedness and the public safety.
The, we hit all those. I mean, the mayor hit it, I hit EMS, we hit RAC, Suss, Suss, Centennial. There really isn't anything for personnel. I think we, I think we hit every one there.
And along with that, it happened with the communications, um, resolution that we did recently, where there was already one that had been done, but we did another one. I know that some resolutions for twenty twenty-two have been put on the borough website by the resolution number and like the topic that it is. Are we able to look in the resolution book, maybe just for the past two years, and see what resolutions have been done and either get them up on the website or a master sheet for us to kind of reference? Because you get talking about something and, you know, communication, well, there's already one there, but we didn't know, so we spent money, time to do it all over again when there was one.
Yeah, I mean, I, that was, I directed, well, I pulled it all, that, that it was still money, right, money and time. But we can easily go back through.
As well as like two years, and the same thing for ordinances, resolutions to ordinances for like the past, it's like two years.
The ordinances are online.
Yeah, the ordinances, as soon as we, they get pushed to Ecode. So I, when we adopted the ordinance, I scan that and send that in general code and then they push up on Ecode three sixty.
Yeah, it comes up, like when they go look for orders, it comes up the, the Ecode. But do you think that's something, and it kind of ties into also like tonight, Ryan gave the REIT commission, you gave the, um, your report, and in our minutes, it just says that you submitted your report. But when I'm looking at the minutes from twenty twenty-two, I don't know what his report was because there's nothing there. So when reports are attached to the minutes, when they're posted online, can reports be with the minutes? So you know what his report was and, and so forth because you, you just, you don't know, it just says, you know, report submitted. So don't you already have it? I mean, is it hard to attach it to the minutes when they get?
Well, I think, and I, I prepare the public packet. Is that kind of what you're looking at? Public packet?
No, I'm just, just looking, just going online and saying I want to look at, you know, twenty nineteen, you know, go through twenty nineteen and, you know, see what was going on twenty nineteen, or is looking for something specific. It's not there, you know, like with a report or like a, a resolution, even a resolution. Like I know the one that you passed for Gills, that resolution that we just did, you put that in the minutes. So when you pull up the minutes for that month, that resolution is there. You know, that would be easier for the residents than trying to hunt down somewhere else. Oh, they did a resolution. Well, what is that resolution? Then I got to go over here and kind of hunt it down. Or I did an ordinance, I hunted that, hunted it down. It would all come up instead of just, you know, two pages or three pages of the minutes, you know, have the reports and, and whatever was done that night attached, so it comes up for the resident at once.
So that two covers some of the bill?
All right, I guess I'm trying to think of the, the best structure so that it doesn't end up cluttering the website.
Yeah.
What, what do you mean by clutter?
You'd have to click on it to get to it.
If it's one document.
But did you scan, I mean, how do you, like, the four, four pages of last month's, Burnell, we will say, do you scan that into that?
Minutes, minutes, I just, you know, say, but it's a Word document, so it's saved as a PDF and then uploaded.
So can't you just do, can't, you know, all she's saying is just attach, if there's a resolution from that meeting or even her manager's report, just attach it. So that it'd be all the paperwork. I just don't know how much room it would take, I mean, because it.
But they're not, then they're not minutes.
Yeah, the idea of minutes is to, and they record actions taken and, and just general discussions. They're not supposed to be word for word, but I guess, you know, they're not supposed to be transcripts, they're supposed to be minutes.
So then you want clarification on something, you'd have to ask, like, what was this resolution on this?
Well, resolutions are perfect. I mean, they get recorded and we have to keep track of them. But you're, I think she's asking if it's on the website, maybe just hyperlink it or something.
Resolutions are on.
Ordinances are uploaded to Ecode.
Yeah.
I guess I just think it would be a bit easier if it was just there, like when somebody's reading the minutes saying this, you know, resolution, you know, nineteen forty-two dash one, you know, was passed tonight on, you know, sidewalks. Well, what's that about? And I got to go searching over here or something, whether, versus, you know, having it pull up right there, just like the minutes.
Can you hyperlink it to, I like a resolution database?
I can.
And that's a little extra work, but.
I can create the hyperlink in the Word document, but that resolution will have to already be uploaded to have hyperlink. That's not a big deal. And then when I save it as a PDF, that hyperlink is embedded. And then the PDF gets uploaded, you open the PDF and click the link, it pushes to that specific resolution.
Yeah, right. Look and see if it's.
Just, you know, if it's.
Well, is it just a resolution? Like where, where does, where are we, where are we drawing the line? I mean, because that, that public packet that I put together is already maybe some pages every month of information, so which would that screen?
Yeah, why not, like, REIT council meeting minutes is empty. Are they going to be put on there?
As long as that's.
What's, because, like, they're submitting our packet, so.
Yeah.
What's, because, like, they're submitted in our packet, so just like our minutes are, are those gonna be put on there at some time?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, as long as we're able to put them on, you know, it's a lot of...
There is, there's a link to open it, and there's just, there's nothing there.
Yeah, I don't think you need to put forty pages of information on it, but a hyperlink to resolutions, that would be resolutions and ordinances.
And it's not like we're doing them all the time.
Yeah, it's probably, you know, what, ten, ten, if you combine the two together, it's maybe ten a year.
Well, the ordinances are already online, you have, you have to link them?
Huh?
The ordinances are already online, you have to link to them?
Well, that's what he's saying, we just put a hyperlink, so you're reading and it says, you know, Borough Council passed a resolution, whatever. And then you just click the hyperlink, it'll take you to the resolution.
For the resolutions, I understand, but not for the ordinances, it's already out there.
The ordinances are already there, yeah.
Well, the codification looks different from the ordinance, the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what makes it confusing.
Once, you, once you, you have to figure out which section, if you adopted it, the ordinance amending another ordinance, you have to figure out which section was amended, the date, and so on and so forth, just through Ecode, but...
And on the previous borough website, there were many years of minutes, and now there is only to twenty-nineteen. Do we still have the other ones to put some more on there?
We do. I, I guess you just need to decide what's really, I mean, is it really necessary to go back further than that at this point? Keep uploading and creating those? I mean, I just kind of picked a, you know, picked a period in time, like, okay, going forward, then we'll have them, again, that's up...
Well, they're still available, in our...
Absolutely, yeah. That's up to...
They're actually probably digitally available, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, we'll, we'll do, we just, whatever, the direction, whatever you'd like to see on there, we'll...
Well, why don't you say how hard it would be to, to hyperlink them?
Yeah, five years of minutes?
How many manholes is there?
As long as they're all saved digitally, it's converting them to a PDF, creating a page.
Well, aren't they already there from the last website? I mean, aren't they already created?
We used to have to create them, because some of those were Word documents, and I don't have the thing, that's a Word document. Plus, those links are broken, so all that information comes back. So I just need to go into our records, save the electronic files, and save it as a PDF, push them on, label.
It's not a, it's not a high priority, but...
No.
It could be like an archive section or something like that, everything before two thousand and nineteen.
I think that's how they are before that.
They had it before, they had like, I don't know, ten years on there or something, then before that, or, you know, we'll go back further then, so it was archived.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
What is this?
Just, it's, yeah, it's just an correspondence.
Stats really, yeah. We just got, yes.
Yeah, it, it's just a nomination, I, I think it's...
We also got a thank you card from Maddo, Rida, Maddox, Rida, yeah, for the donation for the GOG dip, under correspondence, I did, I saw it on... Any public comment? I will have a nomination.
I'm over it, Jared.
Say, I got something.
I'm having trouble getting this thing, didn't we?
You know how to turn the thing off? And, you know how to turn the, when you guys know how to turn the camera off?
Yeah.